Yeah, is it gonna rain today?
It's good.
We have some storms.
Let's hope so. Is it really?
Yeah.
Have any storms?
They said it was raining.
I'm gonna go back down here shortly.
Oh, okay.
The virtual stuff is great.
Yeah, you're watching the news before you.
But it's about a little bit about the board commission discussion.
So, uh, that means you're not paying full attention to us?
You have my undivided opinion. Just not me, just not you.
Yeah, so that means we're not.
I think that's more like divided attention.
Yeah, there's lots of stuff going on right now.
There is. That's Ben Corbin. What?
Ding ding, nine o'clock.
It is nine. Okay, thank you. Hey, good morning, everyone. Uh, let's see, I'm gonna call this Board of County Commissioners Wasco County Commission Meeting to Order on Wednesday, April twentieth, twenty twenty-two. So, uh, are there any changes to the agenda?
I don't know.
None by me, thank you.
Okay, none by me as well. So I think we'll go right into our discussion items. First thing up is the Pine Ridge Plats. Jill, are you here to talk to us or?
I think it's not Brad. I know.
Oh, Brad.
Ben, Brad, some of them as well.
Uh, okay. Hi, Ben, I see you're unmuted. Are you gonna tell us about that?
Uh, good morning, everybody. Um, yeah, I didn't know if I needed to chime in first or if anybody else did. Um, we're down to the final step, I think, on this subdivision down in Womack. I think we've been through all the reviews, uh, the road construction on sites complete. Um, you know, been through it with Brad. I kind of think it's ready to be finalized, got the dedication done, got the road vacations done. I think these lots are ready for market. I, does that just probably add answer, ask any questions that anybody has and maybe keep it short and sweet?
Uh, my first question would be, could you identify yourself and who you're with?
Uh, Ben Sieda, Tennyson Engineering Corporation, uh, representing the developer.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions?
No, I have none. Uh, straightforward piece. Does Brad have anything he wants to?
No, no, this is another great addition to our county. I think the, I believe there's nine lots being created, um, just outside the, not the city limits, but just outside the unincorporated town of Womack. Um, beautiful property out there. Um, it'd be great to get these properties sold and on the, on the tax rolls and have our citizens enjoy the land out there.
Okay, any further discussion? Anything else? Questions?
No, nothing here.
Motion?
No.
Jill, do you have anything other than the paper to sign?
I have the plat for you to sign.
Okay.
That's it. Unless you have any questions.
And I think in this case, there is no motion.
Oh, there's no motion. We just have to sign it. Okay.
We really just come over the family and the public.
Okay. Do you want us to do that now?
Oh, you'd like to.
And then we, we probably will forget otherwise, right? And you'll be emailing us.
All right, this is a big one.
If somebody will let me know when it's at the clerk's office, then I can complete the recording.
And I'll drop it off on my way downstairs.
Excellent, thank you. Now, staff has been great to work with on this. I'm glad to get this one in the books and we'll move on to some more.
Yeah, thank you much, Ben, for the work on this, so.
Yeah.
Oh, no, they spilled coffee out of your.
No.
Uh, I, it sounds like it's time for me to hang up. I don't wanna know.
And you're already there.
Quite the Sharpie.
Yes.
Very special.
Yes. Is that it?
That's it.
Oh, okay, great. Okay, we're gonna skip around just a little bit, because I see that we have Nancy Patton returning for us. Is that right? I saw her earlier. Oh, there she, whoop. Oh, there she is. Hi, Nancy. Again, uh, for our audiences on Zoom, the camera is straight ahead, but we look up here where our screen is, so, um, I am really looking at you, Nancy. Okay, so you have brought a childcare providers proclamation for us today. Would you like to give us a little information about that or?
I, I can give you a little information about that. Um, I think as we all know, um, childcare providers were actually essential long before the pandemic occurred. Um, they, they keep our children safe, they nurture their curiosity, prepare them for a lifetime of learning and growth, and help their parents be able to work, um, and know that their children are safe. Uh, Provider Appreciation Day actually started in nineteen ninety-six. Um, it was started, um, in New Jersey and is now recognized nationwide. Um, support grows every year, and so we're really excited and grateful that, um, you, as commissioners, are willing to make that proclamation. Provider Appreciation Day is Friday. It's always the Friday before Mother's Day. This year is Friday, May sixth. And, um, we would like everyone to recognize childcare providers, early childhood teachers, um, other educators of young children, um, everywhere on that day. So, I guess that's what I wanna tell you. I wanna say thank you for, again, for your support for early educators throughout the community.
Thank you. Questions?
I have no questions. Great, great proclamation.
Nope, I'm all in favor, and Nancy, you and your team do a great job for us, and, uh, we appreciate you much. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. I appreciate that.
Did you want Steve to read the proclamation?
Well, I just had questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott.
I read the last one and I messed up, so.
Oh, we have questions.
Wait, I had a question for Nancy.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Nancy, I was just curious if you could kind of give us a brief rundown of what's happening in our community around childcare.
Oh, about, what are you, what are you after? Um, numbers or?
No, I don't want specific data. I mean, we hear a lot about, uh, lack of childcare, uh, and how that's affecting our workforce and how the pandemic, uh, you know, really caused a lot of our childcare providers to drop out, and I was just curious if that's, um, happening here and to what extent possibly?
We have lost, um, some childcare providers here, um, due to the pandemic, um, both for health reasons as well as, um, just the difficulty in meeting all the health and safety standards that have, that were required. Um, there's been a lot of support for, um, childcare providers from the state. The providers have received, um, several grants recently to help them to overcome some of those losses. We are currently working on a strategic plan of how to recruit more childcare providers. Um, we're happy to say that, for a time being, the building code had required, um, in sprinkler system, indoor sprinkler systems, fire suppression for family childcare providers. That has since been modified, and so now they have to have additional fire suppression, um, equipment in their home, but they no longer have to have, um, sprinklers. So we're hoping that that will help open the door to more family childcare providers. And then, as many of you may know, Columbia Gorge Community College has received some grant funds, um, looking to build a childcare center on campus in the Dalles. Um, that's still in process. We have three work groups, um, from the community who are working on different aspects of that. One of the key aspects that we're looking at is the operational funds. The grant received will help, um, immensely with the building, but it does not help with operation. And childcare is not a self-sustainable business at the smaller level that we would have in our communities, so we're looking for ways to, um, support that.
Thank you, Nancy. I appreciate that update. Okay, do we have a motion for this proclamation, I believe?
I could make a motion. Do we ought to read the proclamation first?
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, Madam Chair, May sixth, twenty twenty-two, Provider Appreciation Day proclamation. Whereas childcare aware of America and other organizations nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on this day, and whereas over half the children under six nationwide are estimated to spend some time in a non-parental care arrangement on a weekly basis, which provides critical enrichment opportunity and nurtures development for children of all backgrounds and is vital building blocks of our economy. And whereas COVID-nineteen pandemic has created tremendous hardship for childcare providers and the families of Wasco County who depend on them, who have continued to meet the needs of the family while risking their health and financial stability to remain open. And whereas our future depends on the quality of the early childhood experiences provided to the young children today, support for high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now, therefore, the Wasco County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim May sixth, twenty twenty-two as Provider Appreciation Day in Wasco County and urge all citizens to recognize, recognize childcare providers for their important work.
Excellent job, Commissioner Kramer. I think that is the motion, and I will second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Hey, Alvin and David?
Aye.
Aye.
And, uh, all right, thank you. Great.
Again, thank you, Nancy, for what your team's doing up there and moving this, moving this issue forward, so thank you again.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it, and my whole team is listening, so thank you.
Have a great day.
Yay.
Okay, now we're gonna skip back to the Gorge Commission memorandum of understanding, and I'm thinking Kristin is here to lead us through this. There she is.
She is, and Elaine is gonna join in here very shortly.
I'm sorry, Dan?
Elaine's here.
Oh, Elaine's gonna join us too? Okay. There's Kristin.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Can they give Elaine a moment here to jump on? Um, let's see. And in the meantime, I can start to frame this, um, MOU before you. As you know, the county and the port have been engaged with the Gorge Commission throughout the last year in various arenas, um, from participating in the public process to an appeal. While there's still work to do, the work has been productive so far to the extent that we have identified some um, shared goals and interests. The MOU before you is a result of many of these discussions and attempt to preserve some of the momentum, um, that we've achieved while we continue to work on, um, the substantive issues currently and, and as they evolve. The intent of the MOUs to create, in, in a nutshell, to start to create a pathway for a future working relationship amongst the parties and, um, start to frame some of the, the common interests that we've identified, um, um, through, through a lot of, a lot of the work that we've done. I do see that Elaine has joined us. She has been lead for the port here, and we're happy to, um, discuss further or answer any questions.
Good morning, Elaine.
Good morning.
Did you have anything to add?
I, I didn't, I did not. I'm happy to answer any questions if, if there are any, but thanks, Kristin.
Thank you. Gentlemen, questions, comments?
Go first. You want me to go?
Go ahead.
I'll go first. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, um, this is, um, this is definitely an opportunity for, for our, um, three partners to move forward in this. Um, a lot has changed since the beginning of the original intent of the National Scenic Area and the Gorge Commission, and, and as we move forward with that, I think that, um, this document, as it stated, that we will strive to, uh, to meet, um, at least, um, once a year to, uh, review and, uh, take a look at this MOU and, and how our partnership's going, but there's still a lot of work to be done, uh, at the legislative level. Um, and, um, because I think that, um, there could be some fixes for this, and, um, um, we need to get everybody to the table and start those conversations, so, um, um, that's my comment on all of this moving forward, and, um, we started those conversations with the community outreach team, um, when we were back there, back east a couple of weeks ago, and, um, I'm furthering that with, um, with Mr. Benz, uh, the other night, and I have a meeting with Mr. Blumenauer next week, so, um, gonna start those conversations to see where we can, uh, go with this, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Cool, so the, uh, same comments, I guess, the, the thing that I wanted to, it's not really a question, but maybe it is, so it talks about, uh, bullet points one and two about how we will meet at least once a year. And so I think the important thing is, is that actually happens, and it happens, um, you know, in a focused, productive way, because I can see these kind of things. You know, we say this, and then time goes on and years go by, and, and we have that meeting, and, oh, yeah, well, they came here one time and we talked, but, you know, I think we really need to focus on the elements that are discussed here about what's gonna happen, what's going on with this community, what's going on with our urban growth boundary, to make sure that those elements are, you know, really talked about. So, other than that, you know, as we talked about before, this, I know our staff and our folks working with us worked hard to, you know, get what we got, and this is what we got, and it's, uh, better than nothing.
Yeah, I would agree. Um, I really, uh, wanna thank Kristin and Elaine and, uh, the Gorge Commission for all the hard work. I know this, um, probably took many, many hours of your time and to get this to where it's at today, so I think it's a, a really good, um, step forward, working together to problem solve the issue. And, and the issue, of course, is the expansion of the urban growth boundary. Um, I hope we can, by meeting once a year, kind of improve those relationships, um, and really find mutually acceptable solutions. Um, I think that, you know, our, our goals really, uh, for economic vitality and, uh, to preserve the beauty of the scenic area, not mutually exclusive, so I really, um, I really commend you for your work, and I'm all for it, so, okay. With that, I think, if there are no further comments or?
Nope, nothing from me.
Okay, I believe we have a motion.
I would move to approve the memorandum of understanding among the Columbia River Gorge Commission, Wasco County, and the Port of the Dalles as presented.
I'm gonna second the motion.
Any further discussion, gentlemen?
Just to restate that this is the new beginning, uh, to, um, to try to understand and, uh, come together. Um, it's gonna take a lot of work and a lot of people to, uh, to fix this, but, uh, I think we're up for the challenge. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And share votes aye. Thank you. All right, get back to our, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kristin.
All right, so I think we're just gonna go ahead and move to the consent agenda, just to stay in order. I think that'll work. And, uh, looks like we just have some minutes to approve.
Move approval of consent agenda as presented. I will second the motion.
Further discussion? Except a wonderful job, as always, by Kathy. That was a big one again. Thank you. Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, moving right along. Okay, Lisa, I think you're up. Elections Modernization Grant.
Kathy? I'm noticing that, uh, Jill and Brenna are still here, and that since we have a few minutes, maybe Jill brought Jenna to introduce, or maybe I'm not sure.
No, so, um, not really, but since we have that opportunity.
Hi, Jenna.
Why, why did you bring, why we brought Brenna?
Brenna, sorry.
Because she is our deeds clerk, is why I brought her, not that I didn't want to introduce her. Uh, she hasn't really seen the process, so she processes all the deeds, she does the mapping, she sends them into our processor in Harney County, and then follows through to the state maps that are updated. Um, Brenna's been with us for Halloween. Yeah, so she's been around for a while. She, of course, onboarded during COVID, so this was her first opportunity to come when we had a plat and see the process and come to the commission meeting. She's a great mission to the team. Uh, she's a, she's fabulous at what she does. We're really happy to help.
Happy to be here.
Great, well, it's really nice to meet you. Thank you for coming, and I like your hair.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, at some point, I wanted her to be comfortable with the process, because I don't always have to come do these, and sometimes I'm booked two or three places at once, so now she knows the process, and she can bring them, uh, if she needs to.
What is your official title again?
Deeds clerk.
Deeds clerk. All right, super. All right, well, welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Quick question.
Yeah.
For Jill, you mentioned Harney County, and I, I know, I'm trying to think, what is Harney's County, Harney County's part in this process?
So, we contract the actual map changes. So, we do all the processing, but we don't do the actual map change, so we contract with them to get them ready to be posted on the state website.
Okay.
We don't do that internally. We are doing some work, um, right across, myself and Ivan are working on getting Ivan trained up. Hopefully bring that internal at some point. Elaine County, you did that for us. And when that went by the wayside in a very quick manner, we decided we really have the capacity now to do it internally, so Ivan's getting training and studying and training them up to speeds.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. For some reason, I was thinking we'd already gotten to that point, but apparently not. It's interesting, we contract with Harney County.
Yeah, well, so he used to work for Lane County and did our.
Oh, that was the, okay.
He contracts with several counties to do the process, but he is technically employed by Harney County, so that's who our agreement is with. There are very few counties that do it themselves internally. Most of them do it with the Department of Revenue.
Have the department actually do it? They pay them to do it?
Yeah.
Okay, which did, I think we used them in the past.
We did, and, um, we weren't all that happy with the work.
Yeah, cool. All right, thanks for the education.
Hopefully soon.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Yeah.
And again, it's a pleasure to meet you.
Pleasure to meet you.
Come back.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, great. Okay, Lisa, you ready now?
I'm ready.
All right, so you have an elections modernization grant to talk to us about.
Yeah.
Talk a long time, because we're ahead of schedule.
You should never incur.
Oh, that's true.
Uh, for the record, I am Lisa Gambi, Wasco County Clerk, and I am here to, to meet with you today to, uh, ask a request to approve a State of Oregon grant funding. And that is, they are supplying to counties in varying levels, um, with the idea being that, uh, this funding is to help with modernization. And as you can imagine, some counties like Monmouth County and Washington County, uh, due to the scale, have all kinds of equipment that they use that allows them to process elections in an efficient manner. And as you get to the smaller counties, uh, who have less funding, we struggle to be able to kind of keep up to date with some of the modernization changes, so, uh, the State of Oregon would like to give us eighty-two thousand dollars, and I would like for us to receive eighty-two thousand dollars. Uh, the grant agreement is specific for, um, uh, ballot tabulation, as the scanner, um, which we have already purchased and installed, and then, uh, to purchase a sorter. So, for the very first part of a process, as the ballots are brought back into our office, one of the first processes is that each reply envelope has a barcode on it that is specific to the ballot that has been issued, and we manually wand that. Think of just like your little winding bars at Fred Meyer, right? And so we have to by hand go through and scan each of those so that they get logged into the system, and if there's any kind of alert, because the ballot maybe had been a first one that got issued, and we really want the second one to come back, then it will alert us anytime there's an anomaly to the ballot that got returned, so.
And this is, that's all before the envelope is opened, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, that's, that's the very first part of the process, right? We kind of put them into, you know, we'll pull them out of the ballot box, or we'll get them from the mail. We'll kind of manually say, okay, I'm, I'm gonna take fifty ballots, and that's gonna become my first batch, and then the first step you do is wand every single one of those ballots, so that's logged into the system and shown that it was received. So at that point, if you were to go online and check the Secretary of State's website and log into MyVote, you could see whether your ballot had been received by our office. So that's kind of the first step. But that hand winding is a very manual process, right? A sorter is basically what allows us to take those ballots, put them in a tray, and it's, uh, connected to an administration station, and it will do that scanning for us. And so it, in essence, kind of removes the manual labor of doing that winding.
And that process is done outside of, like, the security area, is that correct? It can be done, it doesn't have to be in the, in the election facility downstairs?
Um, so, uh,
I'm just, that's a question. I, I was just thinking that.
It's actually the very first part of the process, so it has to be in our office on the second floor.
Okay.
So, this piece of equipment, so that's one of the issues, um, and I'm trying to explore different options for sorters, because even the small-scale sorters tend to be a very large piece of equipment, think at least this table length.
Wow.
Um, and I don't actually have that room. I, I'm gonna need to rearrange again, but it's at the start of the process.
Yeah, and I was just thinking, like, like, I'm thinking of the whole process, right? At some point, the ballots go into the, I'm not sure what you call it, but it's basically a sequestered room, and all of the counting and activity is there, there's no connection to the outside world. This is not the same thing, right?
Uh, it's not the same thing in that it, it does require an internet connection, right? Because it does have to interact with, um, the Oregon centralized voter registration system. So it is not like our tabulation system, which is a closed circuit, um, area. Everything that we do has to be secured.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Right, there's, uh, it's not that it's unsecured.
No, I, I was, I'm just thinking of the, the isolated, or what do you call it?
Uh, our closed circuit.
Closed circuit system, yeah, yeah, versus this, because this one is connected.
Right.
But it's before the ballots are actually opened.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the very first step of the process, right? It allows us to identify that a ballot has been received. Doesn't mean the ballot has been accepted.
Sure.
It still has future things to, to move on in the process. Um, the other thing that sorters do is you can have it tied to automatic signature verification. Automatic signature verification is where you load the bank software that is used by apparently everybody, which makes it quite expensive. And that system will automatically scan the signature as the ballot is being scanned in and, uh, does a comparison to what we have on file, and you can set the tightness or looseness of that automatic signature verification software, so that in essence, you're still manually reviewing everything, or you could say, if there is a ninety-eight percent match between these signatures and what's on the file, then we do it as approved. Um, this grant can Um, this grant cannot be used for that. And, uh, because that's an ongoing software cost, and at this point, we are not planning on using, uh, that money, not that we could, but we're not planning on moving to automatic signature verification yet because, um, it is, it's a cost that would have to absolutely be weighed both in terms of public perception as well as ongoing election infrastructure cost, so. Um, the sorter will literally work so that we can bring the ballots in, scan them in an efficient manner, batch them, and then they'll move on to our typical, uh, manual signature verification process. All within a very secure area.
Is the, do you say the scanner was as big as this table?
Some of the models are, I'm actually going to look at a version, uh, on May fifth in Yumitala County. They have one that is more of a, it's a two foot by two foot piece of equipment that does the scanning. Um, however, it's still, it's, it's got an administration station and a laptop and some other things that it's connected to, so I, I still have to figure out how I'm gonna try to reconfigure my office to make it work. Um, but we have some time, the grant will be available by July fifteenth. We just have to use the funding by, uh, June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three. So that gives me some time to, uh, really take a look and, and make some, um, good choices about what works for us and our infrastructure. Um, if possible, I would like to have it in place for the twenty-twenty November general election.
Twenty-twenty-two?
Twenty-twenty-two, sorry, the one that's coming up.
Not the one in May.
Yeah, yeah, yes, and not the primary, we don't, wouldn't have it for the primary, right? I'm hoping to have it in place for the general because you don't want to wait until a presidential general election to be testing out new equipment. Um, but it is, uh, from my colleagues that use this particular system, they say that it's a, it's a really very kind of a game changer um, in how you process the election, so. I'd like to get that in and use it, but I'll go take a look first and see, and then there's, like I said, a competing system, which is a very large piece of equipment that both scans it and sorts it. Um, allows you to do signature verification on the spot, so. Um, so I have some due diligence to do, but the first step is accepting the funding so that we can move ahead with it.
Great.
Sorry.
Yes, oh, yeah.
I know. I was curious, and you already mentioned about the automatic signature, signature verification. So is that used like in other, in other counties, for example? Okay, so is it a common thing?
Yes.
Okay, is, but, but, and so you said that the reason they wouldn't allow us to do it is because the ongoing cost of, obviously there's an implementation cost, and then there's a cost, ongoing cost for this.
Right, so there's a cost to purchase the license rate for the software that does it. Um, and then there is an annual fee, um, based on how many signatures you need to do a year. And, um, so, you know, with, with anything that's an ongoing maintenance related, um, that's on the counties to handle.
Right, right.
So that's.
So in this case, they just didn't want counties to get into that?
Right, because this is a one-time funding.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
Right, and so, yeah, they didn't want counties to be expecting that, uh, you could use this funding, like hold on to it and use it for years of automatic signature verification.
Okay, oh, I see, okay.
Right.
Um, is, um, I mean, I mean, I'm assuming like, I'm just thinking like, even in our county where you might have, like what's a, what's a, in the general election, how many ballots might we get?
So we are currently at eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty registered voters.
Okay.
Um, in the general election, governor, for instance, this time will probably have a higher return because it's an open governor's race, otherwise it would probably be a little bit lower, um, turnout, the twenty-twenty, which was the presidential, was, I think, seventy-eight percent turnout.
So there's thousands of ballots, and like, the thing that I think people don't understand is you have to verify every single ballot. So then I'm thinking of like Washington County and Molloma County where they have hundreds of thousands of ballots. I can't even imagine how you could do it without something like this, I mean, I suppose you could, but you'd have to have banks and banks and banks of people trained in signature verification.
Yeah.
But you're, but you, you said, you made a comment that there is some, uh, I don't know if it's controversy, but some question about, people will question like, well, is it really verified?
Right, so that is one of the, you know, anytime you automate a process, and the question becomes, is that process really working? So for instance, with our tabulator, right? We, we design the ballots, we create the election, um, the, what we call the BDF files, right? And then I immediately load that and create a test election, right, with using the ballots, marking them up, making sure it's working. We create a logic and accuracy test deck so that we can confirm every time that we are tabulating uh, that those results match, but we expect them to match. So we have a spreadsheet of how we expect the results to be, we run them through the tabulator, and we have probably four different times that we do that logic and accuracy test throughout the process. So what the public wants to know is, you're using this piece of equipment, how do I know that it counted the ballots correctly, right? So, um, every, every part of the process we do, um, if there's anything that's involved, being, uh, there's, there's an audit that gets done to make sure that the machines are doing what we expect. And apparently with the sorters and for those who are using automatic signature verification with it, they will load a batch, and then they run it through, and they see what the results are of the match or no match to the signature, and then they manually go through and check each of those same ballots and say, would I make the same decision? And then they can tighten or loosen the controls so that, um, the system alerts them to have a pair of human eyes take a look at something, so.
Cool, okay, final question, so if.
No, keep going.
No, if, if.
We have more questions, go for it.
If we were to do this like roughly, how much are we looking at? I'm just thinking of a cost standpoint, I mean, is this something that is, you know, costs, you know, ten bucks a year or?
To get the equipment?
No, okay, so I mean, is it like, is this gonna cost fifty thousand a year for us to add this? I'm just trying to get a sense of what the scale is, do you have any sense of that?
So it is not gonna cost us anything to add this piece of equipment because the grant will cover that, if we choose to eventually add automatic signature verification, then that's where we, um, it has to do with the number of ballots that you would have it go through, I think, um.
I'm just trying to get a ballpark.
Right, I think Benton County, which is much larger than us, probably pays three thousand dollars a year um, for access to the software to do automatic signature verification.
That's not very.
So it's not, yeah, it's not as expensive as the equipment itself, right? Um, for instance, when we, we got clear ballot, it was about a fifty thousand dollar software license purchase and some equipment, but the ongoing maintenance is about eleven thousand dollars here, right? So it's, it's not even as extensive as that.
Okay, well, that's good to know, I just, I mean, because obviously, as I mentioned, if you're verifying each and every ballot, there's a certain, there's a pretty significant labor cost to that, so at some point it might make, it might make sense for us to do that.
Right.
Okay, all right, thanks for the education.
No problem.
Um, I have a question for you.
Certainly.
So I know, uh, at the last election, you had virtual observers, right? How are you going to do it this time around?
We will continue to do virtual observers because the, the beauty of that is you can have as many people um, from either of the political parties that want to observe, and we do the, do election observation through streaming from here on out.
Okay, oh, interesting, okay, great.
And we don't have to maintain a room, like it used to be that, that clerks would set up an observation video room on site, um, and then they're having to manage the room, and so I'm like, oh, we don't have to do that. Our lovely IS Director, Andrew Burke, who may or may not be watching this session, uh, helped me work out those details and, uh, yeah, and in fact, uh, we presented about this at conference, uh, to my colleagues, and, uh, Andrew had helped to put together a how-to on the YouTube streaming side of it. Um, so we have other counties that are actually looking at following our, um, kind of our lead and, and looking at doing election observation through streaming as well.
Great, Roger, would you like to ask some questions?
Yes, this is great.
You have thirty seconds.
I, I, I'm curious how the change along in the last couple of postmark the election day and if received it however later it gets to the ballot section factor operations.
Uh, yes, postmarks are now going to be accepted. Um, it means that we will have more election work to do after election day because, uh, the premise is that if you put your ballot in the mail on or before election day and it is received through USPS in our office up to seven days, so Monday after the election. As, as long as we can identify a postal indicator that says, yeah, it was in a processing facility before, on or before election day, then we can count that vote and process it like any other. Um, there is a fair amount of work, we're having to get special barcode scanners to scan the, the orange fluorescent barcode in case there's not an actual stamped postal indicator.
Wow.
Um, and then the final is that if we can find no postal indicator, the attestation for voters now states, I, by signing this and stating that I put this in the mail on or before election day. So in the absence of everything else, the voter is attesting that, yep, I put it in before, on or before election day. We're still recommending to people, if you're gonna put it in the mail, do it a week ahead. Um, and if you are gonna take it to your post office on election day, ask them to give you a hand cancellation stamp, because as you can imagine, in the outer areas of the county, post offices close at three P M. And there's a high likelihood that if you put it through the mail slot and the postal workers have gone home, that it won't get postmarked, um, so. It, it'll be a very interesting change, I appreciate the fact that people who have done their best to cast their ballot in a timely manner will have, uh, this additional window. Um, I would like to hope that voters don't procrastinate even further. Um, but I've become a little bit cynical in the seven years that I've been here, so it'll, it'll be very interesting for sure.
Interesting because this is the way they do it in Washington State, so there may be some helpful information.
Oh.
And we've been, but we've been having conversations with them as well, so, yeah, yeah.
Excellent, now we're over time, sorry.
With that, I would move to approve the State of Oregon Election Modernization Grant Agreement, number P O dash one six five zero zero dash zero 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 six five nine nine. Uh, second to motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, that was really interesting.
Some money.
Yeah.
Yeah, always a good thing.
Yep, so, all right, I will get out of your hair and let you catch up those two minutes.
Yeah.
It's not Roger's fault.
Okay, good morning, it looks like we have Kelly and Christine with us, and you're gonna talk to us about our codes compliance program.
Good morning, good morning, Chair and Commission, for the record, Kelly Houseley Glover, Planning Director for Wasco County. Um, I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce a new staff member, uh, Christine Blake. She had, had joined us in February as our new code compliance officer. She comes to us with several years' experience in code compliance and a master's degree in criminal justice, so she's very well qualified to not only continue the excellent work from past code compliance officer Chris McNeil and those that preceded him, but also help us, um, modernize our program and work to be more effective and efficient for our residents. Um, I've asked her to attend today so you get an opportunity and as citizens get an opportunity to see her face and what she looks like and get a little, hear a little bit from her, but also we wanted to take the opportunity to share how the impact of the new prioritization schedule that we talked, I talked about with you several months ago has had on the program, and I think you will be, um, pleased to hear the results that Christine is gonna share with you today. So with that, I will turn it over to Christine Blake, our new code compliance officer. It looks like you're on mute, Christine.
Okay, there we go. Well, good morning, uh, my name is Christina Blake, I'm the code compliance officer for Wasco County. Um, I'll just start by saying when I took over in February of twenty-twenty-two, we had somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty open cases, and our last code officer, Chris McNeil, when he took it over, he had seventy-something open code cases. And I think we can trace a lot of that back to how cases were prioritized with nuisance cases taking up a lot of time. Um, as I've been moving through the case files to determine what was still an active case and what needed to be closed, there was about forty-three cases for land use and nuisance violations, and I closed those out. Um, the reason most of those got closed out is because they were inactive cases. So a lot of those were cases from twenty-fourteen that just seemed to get to the brink and nothing. And it sounded like from the case notes, they were closed out, they were just never finalized, and that was kind of seemed to be the theme of twenty-fourteen. Um, cases from twenty-seventeen were also kind of just dropped and not picked back up again for whatever reason. So, a lot of them I closed out because they were just inactive and they were old, and you're basically starting over again to pick up a case that hasn't been touched by anybody in five-plus years. A lot of the cases I closed out were already in compliance, it looks like we had like twenty-nine percent were already in compliance because of the age, they had just gotten themselves into compliance by the time we rechecked them in twenty-twenty-two. A lot of them started working with planners, it looks like twelve percent started working with the planners. And we had a few that were just unfounded, and by unfounded, I mean the cases really were not violations. People were reporting things like specifically a house that was an abandoned house that had mice in it, and they thought that was drawing mice to their property. That's not really a code violation. Um, the pictures they submitted showed outdoor picnic tables and chairs and some empty dog crates. Those aren't really a nuisance violation. So that was kind of the gist of a lot of unfounded or things that were civil or they were boundary issues. So I really didn't need to address those very much. Um, so when we looked at the fifty open cases that I had, I re-categorized those by priority. So we put them into the, uh, level one, level two, level three. And the hoarder cases I have kept separate, we have three open hoarder cases from twenty-twelve. Thank you, Kelly, I don't know how to bring those up. We have three open hoarder cases that all started in twenty-twelve. And those probably took up so much time from the code officers, they weren't able to address these other forty-seven cases, which is why they hung there for so long. So when we took the hoard cases out of it, we had about twenty-nine percent were level one, eleven percent were level threes, the hoard cases made up seventeen percent. We have thirty-five percent of those cases were on the path to close out, and almost six percent were, were working with a planner, so that's how we were kind of categorizing them to be closed out. Um, so looking at the level three nuisance cases, we had two level three nuisance cases that are in a holding stage while we're trying to reach the property owner. And actually, I think I gave these to Kelly a, a week or even two weeks ago, and they're already out of date because we're closing things out quickly and we're moving things along at a pretty fast pace, um, now that we're not dealing with nuisance cases, which are incredibly time-consuming. And we're just dealing with land use cases as the top priority, and to spending more time on those, we're, we're closing things out. So on the nuisance cases, I have that down right now to, I think, two. And one of those is on the citation stage, and the other one we're still working with. So we kind of addressed the hoarder cases. In order to kind of help the public understand where we are with hoarder cases, I've got a whole bunch of information that we're gonna put up on our code compliance webpage that directs them towards a lot of educational and outreach, um, information to help people understand that code compliance cannot just go in there with a bulldozer and a cop and remove the hoard, it, it's not how it happens. Hoarding is recognized as a mental illness. Hoarding is recognized as a mental illness. It's a protected class. There's all sorts of protections in place about evicting a hoarder and citing a hoarder and doing anything because you're you're dealing with a mental illness. So on the three that we've had from 2012, I went over one of those just to kind of get an idea of how much time is spent on those. And I believe, just as a a pretty good example, the one that I looked at was touched by a code compliance officer 158 times, which means they talked to that hoarder, they went to the the place, they did something to try and resolve it 158 times. There was a $10,000 lien on the property. There was seven abatement agreements. And I think it's three or four code officers later on that property. When you look at the pictures from the last time it was touched, it looks exactly like it looked in 2012. So you waste a lot of resources and a lot of time trying to resolve a hoarder case because you're dealing with something that is a mental illness that is outside of the scope of what most code compliance officers are going to be able to do. So once we take those out of the equation, we take a big chunk, we take 17% of the caseload and let the one code officer, me, be able to address all the other issues. Which brings us to pending planning approval to close. So a lot of them, we were able to make contact with people and get them connected with a planner. And one of those that we just kind of connected that with, for example, was a case from 2018. Very simple case. Uh, the property owner has two sheds that are literally in the road. They're just a couple of feet from the road on a public access road. The homeowner just was not compliant. COVID hit and gave him kind of a two-year break where he wasn't being contacted. And that was one of the ones I took up. And he was very unwilling to comply until we got into the citation stage of we're going to start citing. And that motivated him to connect with a planner at the very last minute of the deadline. And so now we've got him hooked up with a planner for follow-through. So that citation piece is very necessary, certainly with cases that are four years old and you've just got people who refuse to comply on their own. So going to the next slide, level one land use. So right now, we have four open land use cases at a level one priority. And since they are now getting the attention, we are actually driving a lot of these towards closure or or working with planners. Um, one of them is a septic case failure that dates from a 2012 complaint. Illegal structures or older cases that require more focused attention to resolve. And I think we're being pretty successful being able to address these and and move them along now. So right now, today, this is not even up to date. I had 20 open cases when I gave this to Kelly. I think I have 12 or 13. We're 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 hovering around that. I tend to open a case and close a case. So we're keeping that number around 12 or 13 cases right now. Um, we've got verbal come, a few verbal complaints that have come in. Like I had one on a hoarder case that came in, and I referred her to the resources I talked about building putting on our website for hoarders. And she hasn't filed a formal complaint because I think that might have been successful, connecting her with Adult Protective Services and Animal Protective Services and the police because it was basically an elder person who was living with broken windows and rats, and that was causing her problem was the rats. And she understood that I wasn't going to be able to come in there and fix that. These are resources that could fix that, and that must have worked because I haven't got a formal complaint. So we aren't ignoring the hoarder cases. I think right now what we're planning to do is we're going to send them out a quarterly notice saying your property is still in violation. Here's some resources for help. And we still want to get this property in compliance, but we're not going to spend the staff time going out and investigating it and trying to get them to do anything because it just spins our wheels. Trying to kind of read my notes. Sorry. Okay, so one of the things that Kelly and I talked about is now that we're getting this down to a manageable caseload for one person to manage, that's going to give me more time to start investigating some of our temporary hardship homes, um, which we've kind of done. We found all those were in compliance. So that's kind of what we're going to do is start looking at some of those screening issues and the other things that were conditional use to see if we're still on that path with a lot of these that just never got looked at again once they got their conditional use permits. And we just hope they kind of did it. So now we've got somebody to actually spend the time to go out and follow up on that. So I know it's a lot of talking. Is there anybody who's got any questions that I can clear up in that quick spiel?
Questions?
I have a couple of questions. Um, the first thing you talked about, like, early on, you talked about how a lot of stuff was closed out. I think you basically you're talking about these old cases and, you know, hadn't worked for a long time. So my question is, were those cases, in your opinion, were they resolved in some way? Meaning that, you know, they actually came to some conclusion and we just didn't like document it or something?
It looks like that was the case, I think. In 2014, I I read through all the case notes, and it looked like everything had been resolved. And they were just holding up on the actual closing it out because they wanted to do another site visit or they wanted to do something, but they never did it. So it just left open cases that really should have just been closed out.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
Can you just like kind of quickly define what is a hoarder case? I mean, I have a sense of what that is, but can you just maybe like technically, what is a hoarder case?
I don't know if I can give you a technical. So a hoarder is basically somebody with a mental illness that keeps filling up every space, and they can fill it up with with absolute garbage, um, junk. They just keep bringing things in until they can't move through their home. And then it starts going on to the outside of their home. And you'll see it because they'll have appliances or bikes or metal or wood or just pure garbage. And hoarders also bring in animals. So you got animal hoarding, which is a whole separate thing because we actually can do something with animal hoarding because you've got a living creature there, and then we bring in law enforcement because that's criminal. So when you go by a hoarder house, it's it's the house with all the junk, all the garbage. It goes out to the curb. So you know them when you see them.
Okay, so is is that is that a violation? I mean, I I understand that, you know, you're saying they're protected class and all this kind of stuff. But is that is the hoarding uh cases, are they violations? And are they are it's what I'm understanding is that it's they're difficult to deal with, and we don't really have the ability to deal with them very easily or effectively or?
Yeah, so it is a nuisance violation. So they very much are violations because it is a health and safety hazard. I mean, speaking from the one I did in Airway Heights where I was at for three and a half years, I had luckily just one hoarder case. Um, fire department had made the decision that if that house ever caught fire, they weren't going to go in after the resident because there was no pathway in. It is a very dangerous situation for these people to be living in. And we don't want to ignore it, but I can tell you, I spent three and a half years on that one case with that one person. And I've actually had two hoarder cases. Both of them blew up their houses. One of them blew it up with a meth lab. The other one set his house on fire because he we were in the abatement stage. He set the house on fire. And that took out almost three houses around him because it's such a fuel. So it's very dangerous. But when you're addressing somebody with a mental illness who owns the property, to try to get them to remove stuff, and then they don't do it. And then you give them a citation, and they still don't do it. And the courts might even throw out your citation because you're dealing with somebody with a mental illness in a protected class who doesn't have the mental ability to do what you want them to do. To this, to them, this is a treasure. I mean, when my hoarder burned his house down, he took burnt items because we were going to clean it up and put them in a storage unit because they were still a treasure to him. Their mentality is completely different from somebody who's functioning and can see this as garbage. They don't. And you're you're asking them to throw away treasures, and they can't.
Very good. Last question I had was, um, you mentioned in here like uh land use uh uh issues, and you have level one, you have different levels assigned to them. How what do those mean?
Okay, so priority level one, we have this. I have this on my webpage so much easier. I I was trying to neat these up. So like level one priority is going to be dwelling or other structures that are without a permit, which would be like RV living. Somebody's in their RV on their land. Violations of conditions of approval for development permits. We're looking more at the land use one. We've also included in that overgrown vegetation because that can be a fire risk if that catches, especially in Wasco County when we've had fires last year. The level two, I don't have any on level two right now. And that's going to be like grading without permit, commercial, industrial, recreation activities without permits, um, outdoor parking, like if somebody make a parking lot in their backyard. So we really don't have any of the level twos. And the priority three violations are the nuisance violations. And that's going to be the junk and trash accumulations, which is usually hoarders. You have some that are just people who have got a messy yard that aren't necessarily to the hoarder stage. But I don't have very many of those. I've I've mostly got, uh, well, I got one on the scenic highway where the gentleman inherited his parents' property. It's an abandoned mobile home. It's got like five or six cars on it. They're unlicensed. That's a nuisance violation. And that one, we're still trying to address with him because he lives in Utah. So we've got a a distance problem for trying to resolve that one. So that's kind of what that looks like.
Cool. Thank you. Appreciate that. And thanks for getting back to me the other day on the question that I had.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and I want to thank you for um corresponding with me. Um, an update on that. I got an apology call yesterday, so um I'll follow up with the two of you on that later, so.
Okay. You're welcome.
Um, yeah, Christina, first of all, welcome.
Thank you.
Sounds like um we're very fortunate to have you with your experience and everything, so that's that's just great. Sounds like all three of us have had uh recent interactions with on this topic. So I think we're going to get to know you really well.
I think you will too.
Yeah, um, I guess I my question is around, um, is our current nuisance and abatement permits aligned with what you just outlined for us um at this time? I haven't looked at it in a long time, and I've been meaning to, but um, because as we as we do get complaints from citizens directly to us, um, it would be helpful to make sure these things are aligned. Because I I want to just be able to make sure that our citizens um have the right expectations of this program.
Right, and that's one of the things we're working on. We're currently working on, Kelly's helping me. We're going to get the website updated to have a lot more of that information on there to help people find the the link to file a complaint because you can do it online now. We've got a fillable form. Um, we've got the print and scan form still. We're putting a lot of that on there with our codes. So we're really trying to put an education piece in there. So I think we're all we're aligning it up pretty well. We just need to get the education out there to the public, and that's our goal right now. That's what we're working on.
And and if I can jump in there too, uh Chair, we are aware that we need to make some tweaks to our ordinance, but it is pretty consistent with with how we're conducting business today.
Okay, that's okay. That's helpful. Thank you. Okay, anything else? No?
No, it's great.
So this was information only, right?
This was, yes. I just wanted you guys to have an opportunity and and residents who attend these meetings to see Christine in the flesh and get to hear a little bit about how successful that prioritization schedule that I talked with you several months ago has already already been for residents, is really been a tremendous relief to take what has been kind of an onerous case volume o- over the time that I've been with Wasco County, so over six years, and really whittle that down to a much more manageable manageable amount. So um and Christine is just doing a fantastic job at at pulling together all the resources that we need to help our citizens and um hopefully turbocharge our program into the future.
Yeah, that's great. I think that it must be a bit of a challenge to determine when something is just a nuisance versus a hoarder too, because that probably is up for debate at times.
Oh, no, you you can definitely tell a hoarder house is beyond just a few stored things in their yard. The whole property will be filled with junk. It will look like a junkyard business.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no mistake in it.
There's no mistaking it.
No mistake in it, yeah.
Well, I think in the eyes of our citizens, that might be a little more debatable, but um, yeah. Yeah, so, okay. Well, thank you. Anything else, gentlemen?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Hey, she's in full view now. Now I can see what you look like. Thank you, Christina.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Okay. That was interesting. And it looks like we have Kelly.
Chair, I'm here for one more issue on your agenda, and that's an update to the planning commission bylaws. Um, this is but this was uh in the works with past director Brewer. And really, um, what it is is just an attempt to better reflect our current practices and update some references in our PC bylaws that uh the bylaws govern uh how we go about the selection process, how we manage that group of volunteers, uh and are some of the rules of the road for for that body. So uh you'll see, and I I believe Kathy has included both um the red line version and then the updated version. You'll see that really what we're focusing on uh again are making sure our processes and references are consistent with how we're doing today. And I I can just highlight a few things for you. Um, one of the most important things uh that we transitioned to doing several years ago that wasn't codified in in the bylaws was rotating the chair and vice chair positions throughout the commission. Uh, it's a it can be a uh heavy lift for folks, particularly during the comp plan era when we were having lots and lots of planning commissioner meetings. And so we decided as a body to rotate that that responsibility throughout the commission, and that's been uh very effective for us. It's really given us an opportunity to hear from some different voices and have somebody else managing the meeting. So that's one of the critical updates. Um, it also allows the director to give reviews to planning commissioners. Um, we we most likely will be using this when we have attendance issues, which is one of the things we may dismiss a volunteer for. Uh, if they miss X amount of meetings, I think it's three consecutive. Uh, but it gives us a chance to kind of have an earlier conversation with the commission just to make sure that they have the resources and and things that they need to make them effective and identify any gaps so that we because we don't want to have to dismiss people essentially. So um and then we've made some other slight modifications, as I mentioned, references and things like that. So happy to answer any questions that you have at this time. Thank you.
Okay, questions?
No, I think changes, um, the updates look great and um I'm I'm ready to move them.
I had one question, Kelly. So there on one of these, we have this advisory committee where we try to process and get the actually planning commission members. So we had on there was a planning commissioner appointed by a city's like uh planning mission. What what's what's behind like taking that one off? And and the reason I mention is because I like the idea of having our city's perspective kind of as we because I don't want our planning commission to to forget about the city's, you know, kind of perspective in 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 the case of the county.
Yeah, so there's a practical reason why I believe that that was uh removed from the bylaws. Uh, it has been increasingly difficult to maintain representation from various cities. They've gone through a lot of the commissions have gone through excessive turnover, so it's been really difficult for us to train and um update folks. And I think there was also a sense, um, we heard some community feedback as well as feedback from the commission itself that the there was a sense that it was creating some sort of unintentional bias because we were having city folks um select who sat on the commission for unincorporated Wasco County. So there was a, I guess, an optics perspective as well as a practical perspective.
Anything else?
No. Anything from you?
Um, Kelly, I was just wondering, um, can you refresh my memory? And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but who are planning commissioners right now? I think I know a few by heart, but um and the alternate. Yeah, thank you.
So we we normally have a nine-member body to alternates. We're currently looking for alternates. Um, our bylaws require us to have a broad variety of representation across the county in not only geographic location for where the individual lives, but also in their profession. Um, so we are replacing the the two individuals we're replacing were located in the North County. So we're focusing our search for alternates on the North County. And we'd also have heard some feedback that folks would like to see more farmer representation. So we've been focusing on trying to recruit farmers. Um, particularly in the Petersburg area, that that area has been underrepresented historically. particularly in the Petersburg area, that, that area has been underrepresented historically, uh, at least since I've been with, with the department. And they do participate in a lot of our long-range functions. So we want to make sure that they also have representation on this volunteer body that's supposed to be representative of our community. Our current, um, planning commissioners are Vicki Ashley. She, she's down in Bake Oven. Um, we have Kate Willis, who is located, uh, in the Thai Valley area. Um, Vicki is a farmer. Uh, Mike Davis, uh, is also in the Thai Valley area. He was, used to be a farmer. He's not doing so much farming and ranching anymore. So that's one of the reasons we're looking for some additional farming representation. We have Chris Shanno from the middle of the county, so sort of Duffer area. He is, in addition to doing some real estate development, he, he is primarily a farmer. We have, um, Russ Hargrave, who represents the Mosher area. And, uh, Lynn McIntyre, she, uh, represents, uh, she, I think she lives in the city of the Dells. She has past planning experience and represents some sort of North County. And, um, Marcus Swift also, who I also believe lives in the city. Um, and just rep, represents another sector of, of, uh, he works in the legal profession. And then as I mentioned, we've got two, two positions open currently. Yeah.
Alternate positions are open. Good, great. Thank you. All right. Anything else with that?
Chair, I'll move to approve the revised Wasco County Planning Commission bylaws as presented by staff and recommended by the planning commission.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And aye. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Okay, right on time. Okay, we're going to move over to Public Works. On our noxious weed agreement, we'll start there. Maybe Arthur's with us? Oh, there he is. Can we make him big?
As soon as he starts talking, he should take over the script.
Okay.
Hi, uh, good morning. Arthur Smith, Wasco County Public Works. Yeah, uh, sorry I couldn't be with you. I'm still kind of getting over a slight cold and some allergies and I just didn't want to scare everybody by occasionally coughing. And having a fit of that there, so, um, so the first item you have before you is a, uh, noxious weed agreement with the Bonneville Power Administration. Uh, we have sprayed weeds for them for several years and they would like to continue for three spray cycles. Um, spring of twenty-two, spring of twenty-three, and spring of twenty-four. Um, each of those spray cycles is twelve thousand dollars worth of contract work. Uh, for a total of, uh, thirty-six thousand dollars over the three spray seasons. Um, basically this is a continuation of previous agreements we've had with them for many years. Um, and it's not any more complicated with that. This will be the last, uh, series of, of contract work that we'll do with BPA. Um, because at that time, um, after that last spray season, um, our weed applicator will be retiring. And then I will, I've told them that we will not continue to do, uh, the contract work, but we will be able to, um, fulfill the uh, requirements on these three, uh, spray seasons for BPA.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
No, I don't have anything.
Yeah, Arthur, I've got, I've got a concern with, with the, um, amount, um, remaining stagnant all the way through. It appears that with the cost of, um, of the herbicides and, and all that are increasing, uh, it sounds like the, the work is going to decrease as well. I mean, are we going to be required to do the same amount of acres with, with the least amount of dollars? Or how is this all going to work?
Yeah, no, good question. So no, the Bonneville Power is, uh, the, the contract advisor is, they, they fully understand that they have set, this is their limit, dollar limit. So we will only accomplish the amount of work up to that amount. So we, we, it's not a acreage amount, it's a dollar amount. They've only been able to allocate the twelve thousand dollars per spray season. And in twenty-twenty-two, if that gets ten acres, it will be ten acres. And if it only is eight acres in twenty-three, that's, they understand that. And if it's only six acres in twenty-four, that's, that's all they're going to get. They understand that's all the money they could allocate. Um, so it's, it's not based on an acreage, uh, but it's, it's based on, once we hit that dollar threshold, uh, we will no longer, uh, spray weeds for them.
Yeah, thank you. I understand that concept, but what it is, is that our federal government is, is, uh, reducing and, and now those weeds are going to continue to scatter seeds over onto, uh, county and private ground. And then we're going to have to fight them in another mad fashion. So it's just more conversations with our federal folks. Thank you, Arthur.
Yeah, no, I agree. I'm, it, it's, if, I'm not privy to their budget process. The amount of federal money that was flying around, I was shocked that they didn't get a lift, but I, I, again, I'm not privy to that. So we can only do what we can do, so.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you, Arthur.
Anything else?
Nothing here. I would move to approve Bonneville Power Administration Interagency Agreement number eight-nine-four-nine-seven for noxious weed management.
And I'll second the motion.
Further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Arthur. Uh, next one is, uh, you're going to talk to us about, uh, consulting services agreement for bridge design.
Yeah, excuse me. Um, yeah, so this is, uh, part of the conversation we've had about the, the ARPA funds. Um, this is a consulting services agreement to provide, uh, bridge engineering services to fully scope and then apply for federal funding on the fifteen load limited bridges here in Wasco County. Um, so a little background, so Oregon Transportation Professionals has, they have the ODOT contract for engineering and inspection of the county bridges. So these are all bridges that are greater than twenty feet in length. And by, uh, by agreement, the state of Oregon is required to hire a consultant and have those bridges, um, inspected and have the maintenance recommendations stuff made up. And, and Oregon Transportation Professionals had the state contract for our a, area for the better part of over eight years now. Um, so they're, they're obviously intimately familiar with our bridges and with the, uh, issues therefore. Um, so per our, uh, contract and public contracting regulations, um, they are certainly a qualified, um, engineering firm in a very specialized area because bridges per se are not, a lot of, it's not in their, a lot of people's wheelhouses. And that's what they do is, is bridge engineering and inspection. Um, so per our contracting regulations, I was able to work with them and actually, um, we can directly appoint them and get them started on this work and try to get into the, the, uh, try to get in on those buckets of federal money because they're, they're opening right now for applications to start taking, uh, to start doing bridge repairs.
Great. Uh, questions, Commissioners, Arthur, on this?
Yeah, I just liked the looks of the list and I'm glad that we're moving forward with it. Thank you.
Yeah, no questions. All the questions that I was going to ask you answered every one of them before I asked them.
Yeah, I'm like in the list too. It's like, um, these are all like creek bridges, kind of the smaller bridges. And it, it's really great. Well, I don't know, but you know. It's just really great to know that we're going to get some of this, uh, assessment done. So we know where we're at. You know, you hear a lot about, um, bridge malfunctions and that this work needs to get done. So at this very local level, it's exciting to see these smaller bridges getting the attention, right? They are smaller bridges, right? They're not the big ones.
Well, so, so, uh, just to, they're all on system. And what that means is they all have to be greater than twenty feet in length. Um, but they can be up to, I mean, hundreds of feet, just depending. Uh, the largest one on there perhaps spans like fifteen mile creek. Um, and it's probably maybe eighty to eighty-five feet in length, uh, which in, you know, it's not a bridge over the Columbia River, but for us, it's fairly good size. Um, I'm just really excited. We have an outstanding consultant that is intimately familiar with our bridges and I just, he'll do a great job and we will compete very well for those buckets of federal money. Um, and that's really what, I just didn't want to stand on the sidelines and watch other people, um, get load limited bridges, uh, repaired while we still had issues. Um, this really for transport. Um, one of them is right there with, for, for waste connections or waste management to, to carry, uh, um, stuff to the landfill. It's under a load limit right now. So that's, that's something for sure. That's a high priority. Um, the three bridges on Mill Creek, they all go out to WICs, um, the, the, the water treatment out there. So any loads of chemical have to go over there. And we've had to do some, some things to mitigate that. Um, i- if we can compete and get these, uh, repaired on the federal dime, that would be a real boon for us.
Yeah, and the other side of that is a lot of these are farm-to-market bridges too. So that, um, uh, helps our agricultural community immensely. So awesome.
And, and I think the key thing, I think, Arthur, is they're all load limited bridges, which means they're all bridges that we have to tag and say, hey, these bridges are not just for, uh, everybody to whip across regardless of your load. You have to limit them as to what can go across them. Which is why we need to repair them.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. Yes, all of them are, are absolutely have been posted. And unfortunately have to continue to be posted until we can get the repairs in place, so.
Great. Okay, do we need a motion to accept this?
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve the consulting services contract with Oregon Transportation Professionals to provide a scope of work and prepare funding applications for fifteen load limited bridges located in Wasco County.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Great work, Arthur.
Thank you, Arthur.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. This is, this is being paid for by, uh, the ARPA fund. So it's, we, it's, it was sorely needed. Um, if I have three minutes left, which I think I do looking at the agenda, um, if you would like a quick update, if I can, uh, provide that, I'd be happy to. We, so back in February, I came to you, um, with a, uh, request for the, a grade-all excavator, um, to replace the one that had, uh, catastrophically failed a year ago. We actually took receipt of that, uh, yesterday. It's sitting in our yard. Um, so right now we're just working with the insurance company and the licensing, but we're going to get that machine, um, out and, uh, and working. So feel free if you want to ride, you know, if you want to take a ride, we'll drive you around the yard in it. If you want to experience a, what a four hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, Matt let, Matt let me sit in, in the actual driver's seat the other day.
Oh, okay. Yeah. No, good. I, you can't, you can't sit up in the bucket, but we can let you sit in the driver's seat. That's fine.
He didn't give you the keys, though.
Yeah, he kept the keys in the office, so.
Well, we're still waiting for the full insurance to come in, so we're, we're being very careful. Be really careful on that. Um, no, the other thing I thought would be of interest, so we once again are partnering with the city of the Dells, uh, to assist them in their, uh, pavement management programs. So we will be doing chip seals, uh, with the city of the Dells. The amount of miles that we had scheduled for this year, um, took a little hit. A- as everybody knows, the, the, the price of crude oil is, is fluctuating drastically. Um, we did have some really good, um, suppliers that understand, and I think they gave us some very fair prices. But, uh, we were in the hopes of trying to do forty or more miles and we're not going to be able to do that. So we, we're scheduled right now for thirty-two miles of chip seal here for Wasco County. And then again, we'll also help the city with, with the number of street miles that they're doing. Um, we're going to be in, uh, just again, we're going to hit the hardest roads that really need it. We'll be on fifteen mile Pleasant Ridge, we'll be in the Duffer area, and then we'll actually end in the Womack area. So that will be our chip seal season, uh, just kind of in a nutshell. But, uh, I think thirty-two miles with today's prices, we were, we were very lucky and it's going to be a lot of good work that we get accomplished this summer.
Awesome.
So Arthur, just a quick question. Um, were your, was your staff called out for this early snow in April?
Yes, they were.
Yes, they were.
Probably a little unexpectedly. Was everything put away or?
Well, luckily, so I'll answer that without, no, yes, we put some, we did deplow, we deplowed some of our larger dump trucks. Because it was time to haul rock and, but luckily we had motor graders and then we still had our pickup plows, um, ready to go. So yeah, it, it, if we had, uh, if we had known a week earlier, we could have been a little better prepared, but I think it's, it's all gone now, so. You know.
Yeah.
It's, it's long, long forgotten.
Let's hope so. But anyway, thank you to your staff for a spring plow for us. Thank you. All right. Okay, thank you. At this time, we're just going to take a short five-minute break. That's all right. So, um, five minutes, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chair. And we'll be right back.
Ready to act.
Yeah? Oh, that's good.
I cleared my thought.
No way! No way! Okay, we will now resume the Board of Commissioners meeting for April twentieth, twenty twenty-two. And our next agenda item is emergency management. We have Sheridan here with us.
Thank you, Mr. Sports Commissioners. Uh, thank you for having me here today. I'd like to bring up a couple of things to y'all. Uh, one was the HPP grant, and if it's all right with y'all, I'd like to start with that.
Sure.
So as y'all may recall, when COVID first started, we received a lot of funding from the federal government to the state. The state decided to take that funding, called it a um, COVID nineteen supplemental grant, and gave it to our OHA regions. As y'all may know, Region Six consists of Hood River, Wasco, Sherman, and Gillum. So the amount that was given to us was about a hundred and seven thousand dollars. And since we were four counties, we decided to divide it up into three, with Wasco County and uh, Hood River getting one-third, and then Gillum and Sherman with the smaller population getting that remaining third, which we divided up into two. So after the amount of money that we got, Wasco County's portion was thirty-five thousand dollars. So that thirty-five thousand dollars, thirty-five thousand dollars was used for, or supposed to be used for uh, the preparedness and response needs of hospitals, health systems, and healthcare workers on the line on, in the front lines of this pandemic. Certainly emergency medical personnel and uh, um, getting the population prepared for as well, so additional masks and stuff as needed. So uh, for that thirty-five thousand dollars, we got um, we have two years, we had two years to spend that amount. Uh, for, for the first year, they decided to extend it because uh, supplies were hard to get. Um, there was like a long line of people that needed supplies and only a small amount of masks and stuff that they could give out. So they decided to extend it. So we got two years to spend the thirty-five. So we did. So what we did do is um, that thirty-five thousand dollars was divided into two, of which twenty-five was gonna be used for continuity of healthcare service delivery, protect responders, safety in health. Uh, so twenty-five thousand dollars we put towards that, and then uh, ten thousand dollars was gonna be used for capability four, which was a medical search, uh, preparing for medical search, that type of stuff. So for capability three, which was protect responders, safety in health, we bought a bunch of gowns, respirators, gloves, surgical masks, so on and so forth. Then um, so, that, the total amount expended for capability three was twenty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. And then for capability four, the medical search, which we allocated ten thousand dollars for, we spent about nine thousand five hundred and eighty for uh, enhanced special need carts, as well as powered air purifier and respirators. Right. So there are many funds that was given back to the OHA. Oregon Health Authority was about four hundred and nine dollars. So uh, we um, spent all the money that we allocated and we put it towards where we thought it was needed. So, um, and they hadn't closed it out, and as I said, we gave four hundred and nine dollars back to OHA.
Why?
Well, um, I was, I was, it was getting really close to the deadline, and I really don't like to cut it that close. As a matter of fact, I was really sweating, and then I was actually over that amount instead of under, so. You know, I like to have about a thousand dollars left over, just in case, you know, for transportation cars, shipping, that type of thing. Or sometimes when we get quotes, by the time we actually get to purchase it, the quote's no good anymore, so then the amount goes up.
That makes sense.
So it's good to have a little bit left over.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So that saves a big thing.
Did that all go to hospitals?
So, so Region Six, uh, specifically, we have like these response trailers that um, are specifically for pandemics or other cases like that. So we use the majority of the funding to replace old PPE that we have. And of course, all the other funds went to like medical search and other PPE that, that was needed. So it was really good. Uh, it was highly needed, just as y'all know, um, stuff that sits on the shelf gets old and can't be used no more.
Questions?
So just to clarify that, so in Wasco County in Mountain, we got twenty-five thousand for that first uh, tranche, the capability three stuff. That all went?
Uh, if I may, uh, so the amount we really got was thirty-five thousand. So that thirty-five thousand, we decided that we would put it towards those two different capabilities. One of them was um, PPE for first responders, and the second one was um, medical search. So twenty-five thousand went towards um, the PPE for responders and ten thousand for uh, medical search.
Okay, but I'm just clarifying, like, that amount went to uh, first responders in Wasco County?
Yes.
Okay, so like the hospital as well as like fire departments and police and?
Yes.
Okay. And it was, it was distributed, I mean, somehow we notified them that this was available, or we distributed it based on some?
Uh, absolutely.
This is all passed, uh, basically?
Yeah, this is all passed out. So yes, they, they were on board on it, but one of the things that we also needed to do was replace the PPE of that trailer that's shared, not just in Wasco County, but for Sherman, Gillum, uh, Wild, uh, as well, but it's us primarily that are using that type of P, uh, that PPE.
Okay, and that's a trailer that exists today that's basically stocked and ready to go?
Absolutely. That's kinda, I think, uh, Northern Public Health is the lead on um, keeping that up, but it's stored at the hospital.
Hmm. See. Okay.
No questions?
Sheridan, do you have any idea how long an N ninety-five mask is good for?
Um, I have my own thoughts on it. Um, I believe so long as you uh, take good care of it, it can be good for several uses. Um, and if it's kept away from contaminants, you keep it in a Ziploc bag, uh, you don't touch the inside, uh, and keep it out of sunlight, the usage can be um, extended. Uh, but whether or not that is approved by OHA and OSHA, yes, like that. Nurse, so.
Such a nurse.
So I would, you know, if it, it's for medical use, then I would say follow the instructions, what it says for its usage.
I'm wondering like the shelf life?
Uh, the shelf life?
Like the stuff in the trailer?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so.
Five years.
Who's that?
Will, Will Parky. Um, I just went through this in my site. It's a five-year shelf life on most of them.
Okay, um, Williams, could you identify yourself and who you're with?
Sorry, this is Will Parky with Powder Pure.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Community involvement, we love it.
Love it. So about a shelf life of five years. Yeah. Great, okay. Uh, good to know. All right.
I would refer everybody to the directions on the box, so that we're not giving them.
Yeah, exactly.
Absolutely.
To follow the recommended uh.
Right. But I'm just curious about more like, uh, when you stock the trailer, how often do you have to restock it, for instance? And I guess somebody knows that answer.
Yeah, so just following the back and uh, the instructions on the box will just generally tell you what the shelf life of the stuff is.
Oh, okay.
What you need to do. And it's usage, and I highly recommend follow, you know, what it says in the box.
Very good. All right. Okay, so this is a FYI for us, is that right?
Yes, just, just to let you know that um, the funding that we got uh, almost completely expanded towards, you know, um, uh, purchasing PPE for the first responders and replacing uh, stuff that we had on the shelf for time since the last uh, pandemic, which was um, with that Ebola stuff. That's gonna be bother all that PPE. So it was really a long time that we had it and just sitting there, it needed to be replaced.
Okay. And do we have a stockpile of masks and PPE at the county?
We do. We have a small stockpile at the county that we received um, from the state for COVID.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, these are all just um, primarily the KN ninety-five stuff. Uh, and a lot of hand sanitizer stuff that we still are storing in the NXC.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Uh, if you want the specific numbers, I can probably get it to you in the near future.
I don't think I need specific numbers, but I mean, I'm thinking ahead towards like smoke season and what um, is a KN ninety-five even useful in that? Or you can come back to me with that, but um, that's kind of what's in, what is driving my questions, so. Okay, thank you. All right, um, let us move on to the ambulance service area agreements, where is an action item for us?
Oh, yes. Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up. So as y'all may recall, uh, when I first got here, twenty nineteen, one of the action items was updating the ASA plan. And it took us about maybe years, almost two years to get that plan approved by OHA. And, you know, we did, it did uh, you did a good job, and I got um, uh, since then, a couple of other things came up. Uh, one of the main items is the ordinance. So this uh, just twenty twenty-one, we wanted to start going for the new process on our agreements with the ambulances. Um, where, where before, we were just doing extensions um, because we were still working on updating the plan. But now we had a new working plan. We wanted to go ahead and follow the instructions as it stated in the plan. Unfortunately, um, it was brought up by Jefferson County uh, legal counsel from the Fire District who is in the process of merging with the county, um, Jefferson County EMS. So according to our ordinance, they had to do certain things uh, in um, in order to apply, or in order to get that agreement. Since this can be a new entity, they would have to do the whole uh, application process. Um, as they uh, reached out to us, or their legal counsel, uh, questions were brought up that about uh, the application process and the ordinance didn't quite match uh, with the application process in the plan. So that brought up some concerns. So I've done talking with our legal counsel, our county administrator. We decided that it'd be to the county's best interest to go ahead and extend uh, contracts that we already had with all the providers to the end of this year. Update the ordinance, make sure that it complies uh, with OHA and it's um, has a clear process and, you know, and works with the plan before we start the whole application process again. Because uh, in the plan, it states that if the ordinance and the plan do not match, that the ordinance takes precedence. Unfortunately, the ordinance is quite old. I don't remember when we first um, updated that plan, but not only does it have outdated information and statutes, but also the process and application didn't match the plan. So we want to make sure that we have an ordinance that's nice and robust and clear and that the application uh, process matches with the plan, so we don't have these uh, legal concerns. So I, my recommendation is to go ahead and extend our contract to the end of this year. Update the ordinance hopefully before the end of the year, and then start the application process. Uh, send out notice to all the ASA saying, hey, since you already applied, send your application. We're gonna keep your application. If you need amended or updated, we can do that, but you just kind of do the normal process, do the normal notifications afterwards, you know, and then well, once that, that's all completed and you reviewed the applications, we'll do the normal three-year plan that it's supposed to be. I mean, three-year contract.
Questions?
Heather, any some questions? No, no questions. I just wanted to, I just asked Kathy. So that's about a hun, that's about a hundred and twenty-day process, plus or minus, so. Let's back into that uh, as we're moving forward.
Okay.
So I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Yeah, I'm totally aware that it's a long process, and you guys are probably gonna be meeting several times, and you know, it's gonna be open. Um, like I said, my only concern is we, I want to make sure that we have an ordinance that with updated statutes, that's clear and concise, and then works good with the plan.
Okay.
So first things, we, is uh, doing the contracts, and then in the near future, you'll probably hear me about the ordinance. But I just wanted to bring up the ordinance because that is why I recommend doing extensions until the end of the year.
Okay.
So the ordinance is not the thing today. Today is just all about the contracts.
Okay. Are they just one-year contracts?
So what we've been doing uh, when the plan, ASA plan first was approved, I think it was twenty ten, um, extensions or these automatic agreements were for three years.
Okay.
And then as I came on board, my recommendation was um, just to extend it until we get the plan done.
Okay.
And then the thing got done, but other issues came up. So my recommendation now is just to go and do it till the end of the year, and hopefully by that time, we'll have everything in place.
Okay. And so you're going to actually redo the ordinance, and it's time for the plan to be revisited, correct?
So the first part is, uh, again, um, just a contract agreement till the end of the year. My hope is to update the ordinance, because in the plan, it states if the plan and ordinance don't match, um, ordinance takes precedence. So if that's the case, then even if we, if our plan is not updated, we have an ordinance that's nice, robust, and concise, and we can use that ordinance to update our agreements and do a three-year agreement the following year. I mean, once this contract is done, the new process starts, the agreement should then be for three years. Then we have some time to update the plan, but ordinance after this agreement, that's our priority.
Okay, that's, that'll be the priority.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, Commissioners?
No, just a clarification for the actual motion. Um, as I read the agreements on the last page, it states the fourth amendment, and now we're, we're looking at amendments? Is that just a?
Well, there are, there are, there are eight agreements, well, there are seven agreements.
Right.
ASAs, and there are also seven amendments. So I don't care how you say it.
Okay, I'm just trying to sort it out, and um, so.
I struggled with it when I was.
Okay, okay, all right. Then I'll keep it as if. Thank you. So Madam Chair, I move to approve the fourth amendment to the ambulance service area contracts for areas one through eight.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Hey, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, Sheridan. Nice, thank you for coming in. Nice to see you.
I liked going as face-to-face much better.
Yeah.
Have fun with the ordinance.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's actually, it's just been me in this thing, and me, uh, I, I'm actually learning a lot, and um, I think uh, this new ordinance that we're working on will be much more robust and will actually help our county um, have a better uh, ASA committee, better ordinance, better plan, and just will work out better in the long run for everybody involved, as well as uh, our citizens.
Great.
None of these ASA districts, you think that none of them will have harbor or sign of these extensions?
I, I don't know. Um, I'm sure, I, I can't say one way or another.
Yeah.
But as you know, there are seven, seven uh, ASA providers. Of those seven, three are um, paid uh, paid employees, and the rest are voluntary. I just, I believe uh, this new ordinance will ask to be better for all our providers, so it'll be better guidance, clear guidance on how, you know, we will be proceeding from thence on.
Yeah.
So now you have to go to each of those and get the, get their sign?
Yes, that's it.
Okay. Good luck.
Any, do y'all have any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Sheridan. Okay, well, I think it would be all right to move on to our community outreach program update. Looks like we have quite a bit of time scheduled for this. So, um, why don't we do that?
Steph, are you with us yet?
Yes, I'm here. Can you see and hear me?
Oh, yes. Looking good.
Thank you, Commissioners, for having me today. Stephanie Krell, um, Office Manager for Administrative Services. Um, so as you may remember, late last year, the Board approved contracts with two engagement platforms, Zen City and Bang the Table. Since then, I've been building them out and learning how to utilize them to our advantage. Um, the goal is also to listen and interact with the public, as well as create transparency with our current and future projects here at the county. So I'm going to show, I'm gonna start with Zen City and sh- show you how I uh, use this platform. Um, you're welcome to ask questions along the way or at the end of the presentation, so. Let me get started here. Okay, can you see my screen all right? Okay, can you see my screen all right? Okay, so this is the Zen City platform, which is a passive content gathering platform that analyzes public online discourse in real time. It monitors and gathers information from social, social media channels as well as local and regional news sites. It automatically extracts main points and topics that are being discussed and the sentiment around them, whether they're positive, negative, or neutral. So on social media posts, comments and tagging are anonymous, so their privacy policy is very high. Um, we also can follow groups, Facebook groups, which are followed a little bit differently than Facebook pages. Um, currently, we are following the unedited DOWs happenings, the DOWs past, present, and future. And I've also reached out to a couple other groups, one of which is the South Wasco Happenings. Um, the reason why groups are slightly different is, um, in order to connect to the platform, the administrator of the group has to approve Zen City to monitor, monitor it. Um, and in that way, we can download reports. And like I said, the sentiment that's happening, the conversation that's happening, because it's just impossible for one person to monitor all those groups and the conversations that are going on. Um, so I'm hopeful that we can continue following some more Facebook groups. But like I said, for now, we're following two relatively large Facebook groups, which have quite a few members in each of them.
Anybody at the DOWs Happenings? We're really trying to try to connect there because that's a great outreach platform. We're not having luck connecting with the admins at the DOWs Happenings.
Do we know who they are?
Yeah, they're listed on the site.
Oh, okay.
We've reached out, but we haven't gotten response.
Andrew Malcolm is the administrator for the DOWs Happenings. I've sent him a couple Facebook messages and I have not had any luck connecting with him. So if anyone knows him or would be able to make an introduction, I'm happy to explain the, the platform and, and also show him what, what we see. Um, I want to be really transparent about what we're actually gathering. So let's see, I also received some additional groups uh, that we might be interested in contacting as well from the management team. I presented this presentation to them last week and they sent me some, some other groups. So I'm going to start working on reaching out so we can really get a, a wide, past our net quite widely through, throughout the county. So, um, back to the platform. Admins receive email notifications daily related to certain projects, topics, or channels. Um, one of the, I'm sorry, one of the, uh, parts of the, the platform that I, I like is it actually generates reports for you. So it kind of gives you a snapshot depending on what you're looking at. Um, so I'm going to pull up one of those reports which I get. This is the daily county summary for yesterday. So it shows you the volume of interactions we had, the general sentiment that was received, whether it was positive or negative. It also gives you an outline of when conversation is peaking and troughing, depending on what's happening. Um, any leading topics. And it breaks it up by official sources and unofficial sources. And I should also clarify, official sources are pages like, um, our newspaper, Wasco County Sheriff, for example, is an official source. Unofficial sources are things like any of our Facebook groups that we're following, Twitter accounts, things like that. Our leading projects and what's changed over the last couple of days. And then it also shows you some of the popular posts from that particular period. So this again shows you what, what was discussed yesterday. And again, everything is anonymous, so you don't necessarily see who has posted, just the conversation that's been happening.
Stephanie, if I may interrupt, um, is there, is there data collected on the time of day that these, um, um, visits happen?
That's a good question.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure. I think it only shows by the day. It doesn't necessarily show the time of day that it was posted, but I can confirm that and get back with you, Commissioner Kramer.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so we can also generate reports with projects, like I mentioned before. So what I'm going to do is show you one particular project that we have following, which is for the Kramer Field Development. And there's not a whole lot happening currently, but this shows you a snapshot of the last thirty days. Um, and it looks like we've had seven interactions. One has been positive, no, none have been negative. Um, in fact, it looks like on the eighteenth, we had a jump there and I'll show you what that was. So the top story in this case, and I'll actually show you here because it displays better. The top story came from Columbia Community Connections where they discussed the, the uh, uh, community service fee dollars and how they were being spent. And, and that was after the meeting that you had here. So this actually shows you what was discussed. And here's a positive comment, which was good news. Um, so that, you know, depending on what we're looking at, there can be a variety of comments. In this case, we just had the one. I'll go back to that dashboard and show you another post which might be more interactive. See, so we have this one by OSP which shows you the, the interactions here that people have commented. So this is just a great way to see what people are talking about. Um, especially if there's any misinformation, we can address it publicly if we'd like to. But we can see what, what kind of chatter is happening behind the scenes on our Facebook pages. And it's just a, a great way to be able to track that. Then we have insights that can be created. So most recently, I asked Zen City to create an insight feed based on the transportation um, online open house that McHead led. Um, unfortunately, there wasn't as much information, so they, they widened that net to just general transportation discourse. And there was some information gathered based off of that. Um, they also give you a report where they narrow down some of the, the important topics that were discussed during a particular time. Um, here, there were eleven interactions specifically about the transport development plan. So that's important to know. And like I said, we can continue to dig down into it and get some more information. We also have the option to have surveys. We haven't utilized this yet, but we have our first survey prepared. I wanted to run it by you to see if you had any feedback as a board. Um, so what's, what's great about surveys is they can be dropped anywhere, whether they're on our website. Um, we can ask our news outlets if they would share it on their Facebook page. We can also put it in those groups that we aren't able to connect with. For instance, the DOWs Happenings, although we haven't been able to connect and link the Zen City um, uh, application to the, the Facebook group. Me as a user can go in there, drop the, the link or the QR code to the Facebook group and we can get interaction that way from the public. So I'm just going to pull up the survey. This is the first survey that we proposed and I wanted to get feedback from the board. So there's two questions we'd ask. Um, this is an open-ended question and a closed question. So this we can get rid of, that's later, potential other questions. So the first question we want to ask is choose your top three biggest needs in our community and have these options to list for people to select up to three. We also have the option of other, so if we didn't cover a topic that someone feels strongly about, they can also add that in there. And then why does this need impact you? This is the open-ended question where someone can respond with a few sentences or a few paragraphs if they'd like. So I, I look to you all and see if you have any feedback on starting this as our first survey. If you have any changes you'd like me to make before asking Zen City to create this for us.
So this is just kind of our test process as we're learning the system. And I think, you know, the real question for you is, okay, so what should we survey? And this is just, you know, kind of a very high level. Um, but, you know, do you want to, want to add any options to that list? Or anything different?
I think the one question I would have, I think it's on number E, access to cultural opportunities. What exactly, if I were answering that, I don't know what that would be.
Um, potentially, cultural opportunities could be, um, events at the Discovery Center where they are, um, you know, having a history, a person in the building and, and having a presentation. That would be considered a cultural opportunity.
Okay, I don't know that, I certainly didn't go, that, that's not where my head went, but um, I'm not an expert in how to design surveys and how to answer or ask questions, but just a little feedback there. Um, well, I think, you know, um, good place to start, right? I mean.
Yeah, and you know, as we get more sophisticated with this platform, we're going to start to narrow it down. So like we were talking with Kelly in the planning department about the upcoming updates. And so this would be a way that we could really target in and reach out and gather input um, on those specific updates. And so this was just kind of a broad, um, you know, it's not really driving any question that we may have um, other than, you know, very high level, you know, where do people uh, think we, we should be looking and, and working or as a community, not even as, as just Wasco County, so.
Yeah, so that's a, it's a good place to start and it gives us an opportunity to see how people react. And then we can come back again and give you some additional surveys that we can use. This will be open for likely two weeks and then we'll close the survey. And I can generate a report based on what we found from those answers.
So Stephanie, um, so I recently deleted my Facebook account for some, I don't know if I was hacked or whatever, but, um, how am I going to see this?
The, the survey specifically?
Yeah.
So the survey, it, we can drop it anywhere we'd like, so we can identify certain areas. Like I said, we can ask our newspaper, would you publish this in the link? Would you publish the link in the next issue that goes out and people can access it this way? We can post it on our physical website, co.wasco.or Les. Um, we can put it on our Facebook page and any other place. So it can, there's a lot of capabilities of where we can share it. It's just a matter of identifying those sources.
Okay.
And then where you can get the data. So you'll leave today with a QR code or an access link, so you can set up your own dashboard. Uh, and so you can monitor those individually on what's important to you, um, so.
Right, as, as an admin, you can choose which projects you'd like to follow, those emails I was talking about that, that are updated every day. I follow the Kramer Field, I follow Wasco County, I follow MCMC, any sort of discussions that are happening. I get a, a general report every day and every Monday, a weekend report, um, which I'm able to digest and dig into if there's something that is interesting or important to learn more about. Okay, so just a.
Sorry, I, I guess the question on this one specifically, like, oh, that's great, you know, but is this the kind of thing that we'll never figure out? And we, you know, you give us a QR code and it's like, great, now what do we do with it? And what is this thing? And do we have training? I guess the bottom line, is there training available?
Training.
Yeah.
Scott, so, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hagy, there, we actually meet with them twice a week. I'm sorry, tw- twice a month, um, every two weeks, which is an opportunity to ask questions, to learn more about using the platform, um, to talk about upcoming projects that we want to potentially have them aware of that might be coming down the pipeline. So yes, there are opportunities for training. And of course, please use me as a resource. So once you sign up, I can absolutely show you all of the things that I have learned. But if there's anything that I'm not able to answer, they are available to help us. So they, they do give us support.
Okay, and I was thinking of training specifically for us, if we're going to be able to utilize it or make any use of it. Uh, the second thing I had was on the list there that you had up. I couldn't really totally read that very well, but the one thing that I didn't see on the list, and I just, I don't know what it would be specifically, but something related to economic, uh, economic issues, job issues, something like that. Um, I mean, that's something that is, is not on there. And honestly, the city's involved with this visioning process. And I've been rather frustrated that as a priority, that that does not seem to be an issue on their plate.
We will add economic development and job creation to that list.
Yeah, I think something, something like that. Again, as I understand that preliminary kind of, but I just think it would be interesting to kind of gauge that status too, even though, you know, I'm assuming everybody's not, you know, in Nirvana economically.
Good catch.
Yeah, I wish. Um, Stephanie, can you, I think when I've seen this before, is there a list of where you are getting data from in our county?
Yes, so if we go to the dashboard, we can see what sources we follow. And you can also narrow down what source were, that you want to see on your, on your main page. So for instance, if I go to social media and Facebook, I can choose one particular source and just see data based off of that source. So for instance, this is the last thirty days of the Wasco County Sheriff's Office. And what the conversation is that's happening, um, any particular insights that, that are automatically generated, um, topics again, and then stories. Um, here, let's see, it looks like they had a, a found dog. And this was some, some sentiment that was happening around this post.
Okay, thank you. Can you show just, can you show just the complete dropdown list? Just of what you can, I'm just curious where you're actually finding or getting stuff, so.
So these are just Facebook specific, but these are all of the.
Isn't that amazing how many there are? I feel that. Wow.
And this was generated by Zen City. Um, if there's any specific sources that we wanted to add, we can always ask them to and they're able to add those as needed.
And what, what is, what are some sources that are not social media? For instance, you have another category for.
So right here, it has local media. Um, it doesn't actually show it here, um, the specific sources, but let's go to stories and see if there's some details there. Okay, so this is socc.edu. I'm not going to try to pronounce that website. Um, but this would be things that, um, that come up, that pull certain keywords like this one, hollywoodoutbreak.com. Um, I'm assuming it pulled up the words mop in Oregon, the shoots river. And that was why this has been added to our dashboard.
I see, I see.
Any other questions about this part?
Probably when I get some one-on-one training with you.
Absolutely. I'm sure there will be more questions. So I wanted to show you, um, speaking of the surveys, I wanted to show you a success story, um, which was shared through NACO, um, about a community in Virginia. They used the Zen City platform to create a survey related to broadband needs. Um, in this survey, and I'll scroll down so you can see some of the questions they asked. Um, in this survey, they received fifteen hundred responses, over fifteen hundred responses. Um, and using these responses, they applied for a Virginia telecommunications initiative grant and used the results of this study, I'm sorry, in the survey in order to show where high-speed internet connection, uh, coverage was lacking. And they received funding to connect over six thousand homes in the county and thirty-seven thousand homes in the region over a third, a three-year period. So this was real data that they were able to gather using this platform that ended up in grant funds. Um, so that's another opportunity that we could utilize when we're thinking about project-specific needs um, and, and utilizing this platform. So that's a kind of a, an interesting story. Uh, also, as of yesterday, this is kind of new news. Um, Zen City reached, offered us an additional feature at no extra call, charge called Engagement. which is similar to the Bang the Table platform, which I'm about to show you in just a minute. I've asked them to create a website for us. I wanted to go forward with it and explore how it works, especially compared to Bang the Table, if there's any pros and cons. And I'll start exploring that in the coming months. I, I'm happy to give you an update once I, I have a little bit more understanding of this new feature. And I anticipate it working well with the other side of the Zen City platform, which I just showed you, which is the backside collecting information. And then, like I said, we meet every two weeks with our, our customer contact at Zen City. So we have opportunities for ongoing questions and, and learning more about the platform as we move on with this. Okay, now I'm going to shift over to Bang the Table. So Bang the Table is a digital community engagement platform that uses collective, I'm sorry, collaboration process to give the public an opportunity to have a say in the future of our community. And the goal is to help us make decisions based on that feedback and build trust with our community and our citizens. So we recently purchased the URL speakupwasco.com, which is where users can go to access our site. So from the user perspective, this is what they would see when they go to our website. Community members can create a login to navigate the site and set up certain projects to follow. So this allows us to reach out to them with any updates on that project. If we are looking for feedback on a survey, we have this built-in audience, which has, like I said, they are able to control what they, what projects they'd like to follow and stay up to date with. So we have different project pages. Whoops, where am I here I am? I've created two projects so far. The first is the proposed Kramer Field concept. They can be created for each project and there are different engagement tools for each of these project pages. We have open environment tools, which are mostly unmonitored engagement, mixed environment tools, which are somewhat controlled, and controlled environments. So an example of an open environment would be something like a forum, a virtual Post-it note, or places, which is a map where you can actually drop a pin and write a note and say, you know, whatever it is, whatever the question may be, you can drop a pin and add a comment about it. Our, our mixed environments, examples of that would be stories or a guestbook, which is moderated by Bang the Table. So any foul language will be filtered out. And the user would receive an email saying, you know, your, your comment was not approved for whatever reason. And Q and As. And finally, the controlled environment is things like polls and surveys. So these are more regulated questions, like I showed you before. What are the highest needs? Here are your answers that you can choose from, but you can't necessarily elaborate any more than that.
Hey Stephanie, are you moving to the document right now?
Not right now.
Okay, I was just making sure that you weren't frozen.
No, I'm, I'm here still. So I wanted to just give you a, a highlight on that and then I'll show you some of the tools on this, on this project. So at the end, let me also say, this is the backside. So this is as an, as an admin, what we see on the front side as a user. I'll switch over to that screen in just a moment. So we have a little bit of information about what the project name is, what the project is about. I've dropped an image of the proposed field concept. But we can add videos here, there's a lot you can do under here and you can, in this space. And you can also add multiple photos and videos. There's no limit to how much content you can add. I've just added the one here. We also have project tabs, tags that will help users if they're looking for something specific, but they don't necessarily know to look for Kramer Field. They can search the DOWs or Sports Complex or any, any combination of these words in order to find this particular project on the page. And this is one of the tools I've used. So Ideas is considered a mixed forum, a mixed-use tool. So right here, I've created, what would you like to see at the new Kramer Field? And then this gives the community an opportunity to say what they'd like to see, whether it's additional bathrooms, a walking path, charging stations, et cetera. So on the backside as a user, you would go to this project. Bear with me while my page loads. And this is what they see. So really clean, the Ideas tool is listed down here. And in order to submit an idea, they just click that link and they're able to participate and engage with us. We also have widgets on each page, so move this over. So on this project site, I've actually included the PDF for the field design concept, which is that same photo I have here, but as you can tell, it's hard to read and see the details. So as a user, they can go in, download this PDF or any other documents that we'd like to add. Let's see. So I'll also show you on the backside, the other project that I created, which was related to the Wasco County Transit Development Plan Open House that took place a few weeks ago. So again, as an administrator, this is the, the side that I see where I've created a little bit of information about what the project is, what we're looking for from the community, project tabs and, and tools again. So for this project, I've created a, a newsfeed, which is just informational, and also stories, which the question I've created here is, tell us how the link has benefited you or someone you know. And we're asking folks to share the, the link and how it's impacted their, in their lives. Again, widgets on this program, or on this, uh, project, rather. I've added key dates because we had that meeting that was on April 6th, if I'm not mistaken. And as a user, this is what you would see. So we have our little informational area about what this page is about, what this project is about, and our two tools here. We have our new, our newsfeed tool and the stories tool, which again, once you click on it, you're able to engage with this project. There we go, and you can start writing your story and answering the question. And the key date is listed up here, which takes you to additional information. And just to give you an idea of some additional projects that don't currently live on this website, we have the Resolution Center with the Sheriff's Office that we could add as a project. I met with our planning director, who suggested a couple other projects for their department, which might be, they might be able to utilize this platform for, for example, CWPP and the landslide hazard update. Another key date, which might be great to use on this platform is, could be either related to a project or unrelated to a project. For instance, an unrelated project would be the planning department, just adding the, the Mopin Satellite Office once a month. That might be something that we want to keep on this, on this website. So maybe someone shows up because they're interested in the Wasco County Transit Development Plan, but then is a resident of Mopin and realizes, oh wow, there's this satellite office here with planners on duty and I didn't know about that. So they now have that information on the main page. Also, there's the option for projects to have editors. So for example, as an administrator, I can create a project page. Let's say the landslide hazard update. And then I can assign an editor, who is the area expert, to add content, tools and widgets. So that's an option as well. It doesn't necessarily have to be just me managing the content on the site. And one last thing I wanted to show you is the rest of this main page. So when you first log in to Speak Up Wasco, of course, we have our, our landing page. We have our featured projects here, key dates, any important documents that we want to have on here. Like I said, right now, I just have the, the design concept for Kramer Fields, but we can add information as it, as it develops. We also have a frequently asked questions. And again, this can continue to grow as we start to see, maybe on the Zen City platform, that there's this continuing question that's coming up. This is a great place for it to live, so that users can see that question and the answer to that question. So, you know, obviously, we don't have this information right now, but this is just an example. And then our team, we give them an opportunity to contact us if they have any additional questions. And then finally, at the bottom of the page, another opportunity for them to sign up and follow projects that they're interested in learning more about and getting information updates on as they develop. I wanted to show you a couple of sample websites that have used the Bang the Table platform and really have developed them out over the years. So this is MinnetonkaMatters.com, I believe this is in Wisconsin, if I'm not mistaken. But they have, their design is similar to ours, but they're, of course, they have different projects than we're working on. So just an idea of what it could look like as things develop. So they had a park system plan that they were working on. And this is their project page with their information. They've added some photos, their team of who's listening and documents as they have continued to develop. They've added them to this, to this page. And every time something is added, anyone who's following this project will automatically get an email. We also have Baytown Engage, they have a similar page as well. What I wanted to show you on this one was the u- usage of the map function, the map tool. So this was Adopt a Spot in Baytown, this was to clean up areas of this town. And again, we've got the, kind of the ask of, this is the project, this is what we've got going on and what we're looking for from the community and their, their individual tools at the bottom. So if you click on spots, this brings up a map where as a user, I can drop a pin on certain areas that I know happen to be an area that trash builds up often. So just a lot we could do with, with these project pages. And they're, they're really customizable, depending on what kind of information we want to get out there and what information we'd like to receive from the public back. And like I said, I met with some of the director, some of the directors following that management team meeting last week and plan to send some additional follow-up documents to them to see if any other departments may benefit from one or both platforms. So that is the end of my presentation. Thank you for sitting through it with me. Do you have any questions at this point?
Quick question, so I was just playing here and I just typed in speakupwasco.com and it brought up a very interesting login page that doesn't go to anything.
So you have to, you have to create a user account for yourself in order to access it?
So, so like the public has to do that?
Yes, and that's in order for us to get that engagement. So yeah, we want
Why do we, I'm just curious, because I mean, that's just going to create a, a, a wall for potential, where they got to set up another account and password. I mean, why wouldn't we just like say, hey, here's the information?
You're right, and I can see if there's a way to make that optional. But in order to follow a project, we have to gather some information, a name and email address. So that allows them to follow along in the progress.
Yeah, and that makes perfect sense if they want to do that. I'm thinking if they just want to see it. Because like when I go there, I, I was just thinking like, oh, I'm going to throw this on my, my, you know, my pages and let, encourage people to go there. And if they go there, they're going to see this and it's like, honestly, as I look at it, it doesn't even, it just says sign in. It doesn't even say sign up. I'm like, I don't have any idea how to even sign up.
Okay, so Commissioner Hagy, I will follow up with the folks over at Bang the Table and see if there's an option to, to bypass that, to go straight to that main page. And then if someone wants to interact, maybe get a, prompt them then for a new account, to create a new account. That, I, I see what you're saying there and I see the, a potential issue there.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious, I just thought it was signing in, it's like, cool, let's look at this. And I mean, literally, it doesn't even tell me to have a sign up. It's assuming that I have an account and say, sign in. And I'm like, I don't even have an account. Anyway.
I take that back to them.
Yeah, I'm trying to go there. All due respect, what, you know, what's, what's going to happen to our traditional website? Why aren't we doing this to our website? To Scott's point, I can sign in, I don't have to sign up for my website here at the county. I can go in and find what I need to and, and I'm, I'm, you know, I, I understand we need to move forward, but So let me run with that one. Because the website is just pretty passive at this point. So we can throw something out there, but as far as engaging community and hearing voices, you don't have that functionality on the website. And so, you know,
On our website.
On our website. What we've heard from you from the last couple of years is that we really want to be able to reach out and pull information in. And so these platforms, they're specifically designed to engage people and reach out and grab that information and follow that information. So, you know, it's not just those folks that show up there briefing. It's people all over the place being able to engage. And so that's the reason behind it. And it just, it takes it to a different level, so.
I get all that, Tyler, but if we're going to, if we're going to invest money with these other companies, why aren't we investing in ourselves? I mean, we are to a certain point, but you know, we can be interactive with, with our website.
So we will.
We just need to, so anyway.
These will all be posted on our website, these links. And, you know, people really want to start to engage, go survey, give ideas, those types of things, so.
And I think that we're, all of these are kind of in a, a look and sees and where we're kind of testing them out. And, you know, over the, I, I will anyway, I'm sure all of us are, like, over the next year, want to see like, are we really getting engagement or are we not really getting much engagement? Because if we're spending money, resources and obviously time, and we're not getting that much engagement, then that would be, you know, at least a data point that we go, okay, is this worth it? The nice thing about the Zen City one is people are already engaged in all sorts of stuff and we're pulling it in and just looking at it. This one is more that, like you said, the proactive one, we're saying, hey, here's some stuff, what do you think? So if we go, hey, here's some stuff, what do you think? And people are like, man, I don't care. And, you know, we can get much back, then we'll know that it's not really that effective.
And, you know, it's one of those things that, it's just like our, you know, when we dipped our toes into the whole Facebook thing. You know, we started with one follower and then that kind of spread and built. And it's going to take some time to really start to, to focus in on this particular aspect as an engagement tool, to be able to engage. And I see Amber's got his hand up as well.
Okay, just quickly before, to that point, I think the reason why it's so important, if, if we send them somewhere and it just goes to this generic, you got to set up an account page, it's just going to be problems to get people over that hurdle.
Cause I agree.
That's so many accounts, I don't, I maybe don't want, I just want to see what information's out there.
And I'm curious, Stephanie, are we live right now or is that there because?
That's what I was wondering if that was the issue.
It's, it is live right now. And the reason why, why I may have been able to see it and you aren't is because I'm already logged in. So you can see I have my name up here. So this is what I see as a user. You're right, I don't want that to be a barrier for people just to explore the website, even if they decide not to register.
So Kathy just pointed out that that's an admin login, if you look at the
Yeah, but I just am Joe Blow with no connection.
True, I mean, I typed in what you typed in, speakupwasco.com and it took me to an admin login page.
That's not good.
So we'll get it fixed.
Okay, that's cool, I just want to make sure, I just was expecting to see Okay. That's cool. I just want to make sure. I just was expecting to see that and I saw this.
Before we go to Andrew, Stephanie, I have a question for you. So is this going to require me to go to the website on my own and see this? I mean, I, I wonder, is this going to be pushed out to our community somehow? So people can see that this is available because people don't wake up and say, what's happening? I'm going to go to Wosco County website today and see what's happening, right? So how, how are we going to get this out there?
That is part of the plan is to utilize the resources, utilize the resources out there in order to spread the word about this page, this online resource, this public meeting. But there are other opportunities to get this out there. Once we work through some of those kinks. And we'll also have this link to our main website. So for people that know our main website, trust our, our website and don't want to go anywhere else, they'll also be able to access this from that main website.
Okay. Okay. And the other question I have is on the Kramer field. I'm assuming we're just starting to develop the questions to ask because there's only one question, right? So we're going to be asking more questions on that?
Yes. All, this is a living website. So this will continue to grow and evolve as information grows and evolves. So you're right. We'll, we'll start adding more questions, some more content. And the page will get larger with more richer content as we, as that, as information changes.
Okay. And just one other question I have, I think, is on the Zen City platform. So do you send out any teasers, for instance, to see what people are thinking out there? Or we're just gathering just whatever's out there to see what's on people's minds?
So for Zen City, we're just gathering information, but I can tee up the folks at Zen City if we know something's happening like that transportation, the online transportation, open house. I knew that was coming. So I asked for that insight ahead of time. And I said, okay, here's the date and the time when this event is happening. And then like to see what conversation is happening around the words.
And like she said earlier, we can actually dump something onto the Dallas happening to start giving.
Yeah. Okay. Cool. Okay. All right. Great. And I guess, did Andrew have his hands up?
Yes, yes, I did. Andrew Burke, Information Services Director. So really I wanted to speak to Steve's, Commissioner Kramer's comment about using our website. Oftentimes, even if we were to use our website, what, what things like that tend to do is we'll, we'll take three or four different tools and plug them all into that website and redirect them to that area. And so really what the way that I see this is, is kind of a launching pad to, to get to that point, right? Where we can, we can take these different tools and, and get that information out there through our website as well. So, so I wouldn't say that that's not the case. I'd say this is a good stepping stone to that point.
Thank you, Andrew.
Great. Okay. Is there anything else?
No. So I mean, kind of the final ask is, we need your help and you know, what you want to hear about, how you want to engage. We need the press that's here today to help us market this engagement piece. Cause this is, this is positive for our community. So we'll be reaching out directly as well as just kind of this overview today to start talking about that. So.
Yeah, this is a great, I think, addition to gathering public input. I mean, it's not for everybody. It's definitely, I mean, I'm just, it's one of those things I don't particularly like to do myself. But I think there are a lot of people that enjoy digital communication and, and getting in there and doing that. So it's, it's just another avenue that we can gather feedback. We'll see how it works and. So are we ready to move on, Commissioners? Okay. And I just want to assure the public that I am going to get to a public comment, but we do have a couple more items. So hang in there if you want to make a public comment. We'll get to it after our next two items. So thank you. So, all right. It looks like next up is our Powder Pure Resolution and Matthew Cates is here with us. So. Good morning, Matthew.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair. Thank you very much for slotting some time for us on your agenda today. This is an issue that has been presented to the County Commission and the City of Dallas City Council before. And this is in regards to Powder Pure's Enterprise Zone Agreement that they currently have with the sponsors of the, at the time, existing enterprise zone between the city of the Dals and Wosco County and some provisions that the state passed to, in light of some of the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. And so more specifically, under the agreement Powder Pure has with the City of the Dals and Wosco County, they have to maintain a certain level of employment. And throughout the COVID-19 pandemic and continuing to today, that's been increasingly difficult. And so last year, the County Commission and City Council passed a resolution temporarily adjusting the minimum number of employees that Powder Pure has to have in order to remain eligible under their abatement program. And that was applicable to the last year. There is an option to do that one more time for this year. Powder Pure has continued to have employment challenges. And we have a representative on the call today, William Perkey, who has a short presentation for you to add some additional supplemental data from his presentation last year about those continued challenges. And we would be seeking an additional resolution, again, adjusting that employment level to reflect last year. So keeping the same minimum requirement that we set last year, which is 50 employees. And I believe they're currently at 54, although there is some variability of that. So before I turn it over to William Perkey for his presentation and Kathy, you may have to allow him to share screen. Perfect. I will make note that we are in the fourth year of the abatement agreement with Powder Pure. And so as part of that extended abatement, we do have a provision that in the fourth year, the applicant pays a fee to the city and county calculated at 50% of the taxes they would normally owe. And then in the fifth year, it's 75% of the taxes that they would normally owe. So they are already in that process of transitioning back onto full tax or the tax rolls, which was the intent of that, that agreement for the fourth and fifth year. And so if you don't have any other questions, that was just the brief, brief background there. And I can turn it over to Mr. Perkey.
Okay. We've already met Mr. Perkey, actually.
Oh, he helped us out today.
I'm glad to hear.
Hello, everyone. As stated by Matthew, thank you, Matthew. I'm William Perkey, the Engineering Manager for Powder Pure. We are here today to seek a continuance of the resolution that was passed last year. And I'll have a presentation just to show the continuing effects. If I can share my screen. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. I love it when things work. So for 2020 through 2022, the plant is running at a 28% capacity. We have this abatement with the expansion that was put in place. That expansion increased our total plant capacity by 50%, unfortunately, where we have been unable to use that expanded capacity. The main point of contention is our employee headcount. This is the reduction that we're requesting. We saw continued inability to fill the open positions. While we have had traction in getting employees to apply and begin work, our employee turnover has increased significantly. We've outsourced or remote worked several departments due to the fact that we couldn't fill those positions. So that has lowered our overall open position at the plant level. And I think that's the only thing that matters for in, in Wosco County employment. Our employee turnover rate, as stated, has kind of been from 48%. So we've retained about 50% of the employees that started working and has increased to about 68%. In the past 12 months, we have hired 34 employees, but with that 68% retention rate. The average salary at Powder Pure has increased 9.3% in the past year to about $26.44 an hour. This goes across salary ranges from people who are hourly in salary, but it's based on a 40-hour work week. With our production amounts, we have still been below our expected 40,000 KGs. We are trending steadily. So we're able to maintain where we're at, but we are definitely not reaching the goals that we are needing to maintain profitability. And this is the state of Powder Pure as it stands. Are there any questions you have for me?
Questions?
Questions.
On you. Do you, do you, do you offer benefits for your full-time or part-time?
We are, we offer full benefits. We, we are a international company. We have industry standard benefits that medical, dental, vision, EAP assistance programs, pretty much anything that you would expect to find, we offer 401K matching, flexible work schedules. We, we strive to be industry leaders.
Oh, great. The other question I have is, do you have a sense of why people are leaving and where they're going?
We don't have any way to view where they are going. We do perform exit interviews. The range is very enough that we don't see a trend. Some, some we lose to competitors, some go to cherry growers. So we're, we're swapping in between our competitors, which is normal. Some, believe it or not, the stated reasoning is gas prices. So we've got, we've had people that were commuting in to our plant and they took even a lesser paying job or a lesser job closer to home because it worked out for them financially.
Do you know how many people commute?
I don't have that number available, but I could get it if needed. I know I, I personally commute an hour in and there are, I would say at least 20% of our company commutes in.
Oh, that's, that's what I was wondering. So that's close enough. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
What's this picture of?
Oh.
Obviously it's a mountain.
I have no idea.
It's a very flat top mountain. It looks very odd.
It's one of our, our stock photos.
Okay.
But I, I imagine it's Oregon. I think that's hood on the right side. If not.
Oh, yeah. That looks like Mountain Helen. So isn't that kind of? Or Rainier.
That's why it would be flat.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Anything else, gentlemen? Okay. And we need a motion.
Yeah, I'll move to approve resolution 22 dash 02, adjusting minimum employment level requirement pursuant to sections two and three of, I'll spill two, three, four, three, 21, 21 for Powder Pure.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Chair, none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And chair votes aye. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
And Matthew, you are up for the Strategic Investment Program Community Service Fee.
Well, I actually think I might have pumped that over to Tyler.
Oh.
Let me ask, let me ask a question. Do you want us to go back through the history or do you want to know again? Or do you want to know where we're at today?
Let's go from the very start.
Okay. No, let Matthew.
No, 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 no. You got it. You got it.
Okay. So as everybody knows, we've come to the point where we have to address the distribution of the community service fee. And we started that conversation with all the taxing districts and it came back down to really needing to sit down with the city, the county and the fire district. And so we did that over two meetings. The last meeting, the city, county and fire district came to the agreement that we would distribute the community service fee to all the taxing districts in the tax code area by whatever their taxing authority or their percent of the total taxing authority was. And so we pushed that out now to all the different taxing districts. Our department approved it last night or day before yesterday. I think Corliss at the library approved it last night. We got Parks and Rec tonight. So we're systematically going through the process of, of meeting with the districts to approve the IGA. And so what that will do is, is push dollars into everybody's general fund for the duration of the community service fee payments for projects one and projects two. So it is the entirety of the community service fee.
And can you just quickly, what's the estimate of what that amount is and the timeframe?
Joe Broder file.
Okay.
It's up to a maximum of 2.5 for projects.
For each project, at the estimated $600 million total bill, the community service fee is $24.7 million over a 15-year period. So times two.
Okay. So basically just shy of 50 million over that period.
Correct.
Okay.
And the payments do not begin until the projects are completed.
And then, you know, I would just say that, you know, that was certainly a difficult negotiation. And I appreciate everybody's willingness to come to the table and have a conversation. And I think I said this at the fire districts, you know, it's a good negotiation when that, when both parties are not necessarily happy with the outcome. But we got there. We got there as a community. And you know, I think the, the big winner here is our schools. And I hope that they'll be able to leverage those dollars to help leverage their, their bond measure that is coming up. And so, you know, it's just a straight distribution to everybody according to their tax rate. And I don't know if my partners on the negotiating team would like to add anything to that. But much appreciation goes out to all the districts around. Getting this thing finished length or our due date on May 16, 17. So.
Just to reiterate, especially for press, that the community service fee portion is not a tax dollar. It's a fee dollar. So it really benefits the population. The streets, the state colleges, possibly some communities.
So the state can't use that to supplant.
Yeah. It's not, it's not a tax dollar. It's a direct fee.
And I'm sure I'll just follow. I was on that team and, and the amount of effort that went into all of this, all the way through was outstanding. My partners at the city and all of our, our special districts. Were not unlike the MOU we signed earlier this morning. We're on the path to moving forward in our community and I only see good things coming. So.
A quick question. I'm not even sure. So like there, I know there was lots of discussions and I'm not sure what of that is a blink, I guess, but was, there was an attempt to do something else with these funds? Like initially, what was, I mean, I was trying to remember exactly how one of the, one of the considerations was to do this and that.
So I think at the end of the day, I think we had like seven, maybe eight different proposals that were out there. You know, the last one we put forward was to give two thirds of it entirely to the school and give a third to the Kramer Hospital project. Is there such high impact projects for this community? And where the need is, you know, there was another one to distribute it to just the taxing districts that are in, identified in the ORS, which cut out three, three, three other taxing districts, the state school district and college and college.
So the first one you mentioned is the idea of like greater good projects.
Right.
And that was the idea to use those funds to do a project that was, you know, perhaps to the, to the greater benefit of, okay. And that was that, that idea was considered, but it wasn't, it wasn't.
It was considered, but we couldn't get consensus around that. You know, people wanted the dollars to come into their entities. And then if they chose to participate in these greater good. And then if they chose to participate in these greater good type projects, that they could choose to do that on a board by board basis. So. It's unfortunate, but I think certainly we'll come back with an ask to those same tax districts, right? Because this is all, for lack of a better term, found money outside of what all of us would be getting through our normal revenue sources. And I still think there are some significant projects that this community that outweigh all of our individual needs. And so, you know, they'll be an ask and then those districts can choose to participate or not participate. So. So that's kind of how we ended it and brought it to conclusion. And.
So these, I'm sorry, these dollars will be coming in like year by year. It's not like a lump sum. And I'm thinking like, for example, let's just say two thirds was to go to the school district for facilities. They could actually get all that money upfront by somehow bonding or loaning it with, as using the revenue stream as a repayment.
Potentially.
Potentially.
Yeah.
You know, if they qualify, I mean, we're all kind of in that same, you know, every taxing district.
Yeah.
You know, fire department wanted firefighters, they could, you know, bond against that, that revenue source.
Right.
However long.
But these.
If we needed dollars for Kramer Field, we can bond against it, use those dollars to pay that back. So.
But these funds will come in over a twenty, twenty-five year period?
Potentially. Potentially.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. And again, potentially two projects. So and only the dollars only going to come in if those projects happen.
Yeah.
Could be one, could be two, could be both.
Yeah. And like you said, you know, depending on what they build out there and the value, you know, the maximum would be two point five million per project. So.
I think it's good for folks to know, like, that's how it's happening. And that's, because it's a big number, right? It's almost fifty million dollars. It's like, wow, that's a ton of money, but it's coming in over a long period of time. So districts will get small amounts over that line, which is not a bad thing, right? I mean, that's a good thing.
And we, you know, we can take that a little bit further as well because now we have the old five projects on the books this year.
That's true.
And we still don't know what those numbers are going to be, you know? And so as those, as those resources flow to the districts, we could potentially utilize those community service fees. As Tyler mentioned, that we could all come back together again and have another conversation. So, you know, I see that, that, you know, this fall will, will kind of help us figure out how we're going to go, right?
Yeah. Cause that, cause that's literally soon, you know?
Well, and I may add that with, I wish Google had made the announcement a little bit earlier, but with now Google's commitment to reinvest locally, both here in the Portland area, not only do we have what we're working on as a value assets one one, but their commitment to reinvest. So that gives us a little better view of, you know, like potentially the next five to six years might look like that.
Yeah. So.
It's all good.
It's all good.
Yeah, it's all good.
So Madam Chair, I will move to approve the intergovernmental agreement between Wasco County and City of the Dallas, Mid-Columbia Fire and Rescue, Wasco County Library and Service District, North Wasco County Parks and Recreation, Wasco County Four H and Extension Service District, Wasco County Soil and Water Conservation District and the Port of the Dallas for the apportionment of the Google LLC Design LLC and Moraine Industries LLC Strategic Investment Program Community Service Fee.
That was a mouthful.
I've been practicing that one all the time.
I'll second the very long one.
Any further discussion? Okay, great work. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
So if I can take this moment, this is kind of a crowning moment to acknowledge Matthew. This is his last word of commissioners meeting. And, you know, a lot of this work in, in the background, Matthew and Jill as well, put hours and hours into creating spreadsheets and presentations and helping us create models and you name it. And so I think it's fitting that we just approved this agreement on Matthew's last board of commissioners meeting. And, you know, maybe if you push it far enough, you can approve it as your first city council.
Yeah, yeah.
Moving into the city manager position. And so, you know, it's, it's bittersweet for me because you've added to this organization and the ability and, and our ability to really move things forward immensely. So I'm going to certainly miss that. But on the other side of that coin, I can't wait to work with you at the city. So, you know, we're in a great relationship moving forward.
And, and everyone knows it's a tremendous opportunity. I'm just very appreciative of the time that I've had here at the county. The two years has, over a little over two years have flown by. And the team and all Wasco County staff and Tyler, working with Kathy, have all been tremendously supportive and giving me the opportunities to be involved in something so momentous and watershed moments for, for our community. Looking forward to just moving a block away or so and continuing to have this relationship with the county and work together as partners. So I just want to thank you all here in this room and anybody else listening. And I'm looking forward to it. But yeah, the, the word that rings true is certainly bittersweet. I will, I will miss working for the county.
Yeah. Well, congratulations. We expect great things.
Yeah.
No pressure.
Okay.
No pressure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll catch you later.
Okay.
We still have a lot.
You'll know where it's going to be.
Yeah. Okay. Well, we're going to move on here to public comments. So at this time I'll entertain a public comment from anyone in the audience or on Zoom. So please raise your hand or unmute yourself. Okay. And for those of you that like to entertain yourselves by watching our videos, if you want to make a public comment to us individually, our cell phones are on our website. On the Wasco County website, you're welcome to call us individually at any time if that's a more comfortable way for you to comment. So. Not seeing anybody? Kathy, are you? No? Okay. Then I think we'll go ahead and move on to commission call. So commissioners, anything you'd like to share?
Yeah. Arthur, I, this one's, this one's for you. At our Tuesday morning legislative call, Representative Bonham is going to float a letter to the governor's office to potentially reduce some of the fuel taxes that have happened. And we taught, when we discussed this, we didn't want it to affect or any of our, our, our public works departments. And so maybe I could, I could ask you to give me a list of, of those that affect you in that world so that I can make sure that, that if I sign something that I'm not unduly challenging our department. So just a heads up for you on that. And also for the two of you, that, that, that might float back around as a board letter to send in. So we'll see where that plays out. Haven't heard anything since yesterday morning on that. Yesterday also, or on Tuesday morning, was Public Health Modernization Program was, was challenged by one of our colleagues in Klamath County that, that counties are not having any input in some of the say. So I'm just bringing that up, that we might want to follow up on and, and especially you, chair, to find out if that's the world that you're part of. You know, is there any validity to that or, you know, where are we at? And so I participated in a conversation yesterday with Obsidian Renewables on a hydrogen project. It's been floating around for a while. Pretty good meeting. And then I've got a Rangeland Fire Protection Association meeting coming up Saturday night at six thirty to talk about maybe a development for the unprotected ground in Wasco County. So if this, if we can make this thing move, then all of Wasco County will have some sort of fire protection. That's about all I got.
Would you like maybe have Shelley come to our next meeting and talk to us about public health modernization?
That'd be great if, if, if it's kind of been, if it's been pushed out, if the modernization has been pushed out. I know it's been in the works for several years, but put on hold because of COVID. And so it might be good to know where we're at with that right now.
Yeah, I think, I think we've been participating for several years in modernization of public health here locally. But I think it'd be great. We could get an update from her so we can.
Cool. Thank you.
Understand what it is. So it'd be great. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. How about you?
I was just going to comment the, and I was on the call on Tuesday morning too. But the idea behind that, just want to make sure, is, is basically to help the farmers. I mean, because basically trying to, trying to figure out a way that they can be helped. Is that, is that correct? That was the idea behind like reducing the tax? Is, am I, did I get that correctly?
I think it's for everybody.
It's for everybody, but yeah, yeah.
I, I think that the idea was, was the higher level stuff on the taxes that were taken for this project and that project. And so.
Okay. Yeah. Cause we've seen it around the country where states have, right? And it's where they, they basically just like ceased the state tax for a while to reduce the gas prices. So anyway, okay. That was, that was, what's that?
Arthur, also you can comment.
Oh, okay. Any reduction, Xavier, will directly impact our funding. The state tax represents seventy percent of our funding.
Interesting. Yeah.
Okay. Well, well, we're, I'll follow up with you and we'll make sure that as, as Bonham puts this letter together, that we're not affected. So.
Yeah.
Cause if we are, I will sign it.
Yeah. I think the idea there would be that any reduction in state taxes would be netted out of state distributions, not out of county distributions, but that's going to be a difficult thing.
Right. And that's, yeah.
Yeah. The, the only other thing I was going to say, I was going to comment on, well, just a quick update on Center for Living. So again, our staff is, continues to work there, is doing amazing work. It's, it's going well. The one thing I would say, which is interesting, it's not interesting, but we have twenty-five-ish positions open, right? Which I'm thinking, wow, that's a lot, right? But then what I heard just the other day was like Wasco County has twenty-some positions open too. And I was like, really? And I just looked and it's like, I have never seen that many positions in Wasco County open. And these are good positions, like really good positions. And there's many of them that we cannot fill for many of the same reasons that at Center for Living, we cannot fill. Obviously, mental health, you know, the mental health field is really challenged now in terms of opportunities. So it's difficult to get people, but even, you know, like I know in HR here, in HR, we're struggling to find people. And if you can't, if you don't have a good HR system that does recruitment, it's really hard to find people anyway. So it's a very interesting situation. But that said, I'd say things at Center for Living are, are still going fairly well, even though we need more people to be able to provide more services. So this is an update for you folks.
And I would just add to that, you know, in the public sector, we're bound by pay equity, which in today's marketplace is, is a real anchor for us to be able to recruit. And I'll give you an example. We've had an employee that has of the last year been made four different offers from the same private company. And the last one was just so high that, you know, it was, I have to take it. And that is happening all across our region and probably all across the US right now. And so it's making a very difficult competitive environment for us to recruit. You know, we don't have tier one anymore, which, you know, that's what used to set public employment apart. And, and so now it's, it's, it's a recruiting game and the workers are not there. So. We are trying to be agile and pivot as an organization, both here and at Center for Living. So I think you're going to see a lot less experienced people moving into positions that we're going to work on developing and training. And hopefully, you know, we can keep them as long as we can by doing that. And so, you know, it's just, it's, it's really challenging, especially for skilled people like at Center for Living, for, you know, mental health therapists and those types of things. Everybody has ten positions open. And so then it becomes, who can buy what?
But you all have limitations, both just real limitations and then just practical limitations from, if you have a union. I mean, you can, you know, you have scales that can pay. So. But it's interesting. I think the thing that was most surprising to me was how I wasn't aware of how many positions we had open at our county. And I think there's twenty-some positions.
Yeah. Wow.
That's a lot.
It's a lot that I think, you know, everyone's struggling, even the private sectors. We've heard from powder pure and they don't, they don't have some of the, you know, restrictions that we have. So it's a big curiosity to me. It's like, what are people doing? And, you know, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, I've heard, you know, you read some national articles about, you know, childcare is affecting everything. People can't afford that. So people are deciding to stay home and just live on one income. But I don't know if that's really what is happening. You know, it's just a mystery, really. I mean, people have to work, but where are they?
It's a great time if you're looking for a job.
Yeah, it is.
It's an opportunity.
Go ahead.
I would say the, the only other thing I was going to mention, I mentioned just because we all actually were able to meet with Congressman Klippen, which was a, which was a good thing. You know, I've been here for a while and that was a kind of a unique thing for a congressman to reach out to us individually and say, we want to sit down with you for an hour and listen to what you have to say and how we can help you. So that was, that was great. I had a good conversation. I'm sure you guys did as well. And we'll see.
Yeah, I did. I asked him what he thought, how, I said, you've heard a lot because we've met with Margie and Steve's been in Washington DC. And I said, so what do you think you can help us with? I didn't get a straight answer, but that's weird. Cause he's hearing a lot, you know? I'm sure when you meet with these people, all they hear is we need money for this, we need money for that, we need money for this. And tangibly, what did he really think he could actually help us with? You know, but anyway, I, I was also struck by how tall he was. I've never seen him like, you know, except for sitting down. He's like six foot five. He's huge. But anyway. I wanted to, just for my commission call, just, I don't think I've given you a update on Norcore recently. So at our last board meeting, we did pass a new administrative structure, which will entail having kind of a three-headed administrative team, which will be a jail manager, a detention manager, and then a business manager. The business manager will be overseeing all of those, what we call shared services, like IT, HR, budget, those kinds of things. We don't have intentions of hiring that person, probably going to be looking at next budget cycle to see how much that's going to cost. And, but not for this year. We're not going to be hiring twenty-two, twenty-three.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Because our current structure is working. Sheriff Lowry and Molly want to continue and follow through some projects they're working on before we hire a business manager. And, and then we also restructured the board. So we now are just the four county commissioners on the board. We no longer have the sheriff or the juvenile representative as an ad hoc member. So it's just the four of us. So the bylaws have been changed. And so I know you get asked a lot about that on the radio. So I thought I'd give you that final. That has happened. So I think we're excited to actually come to some decisions around that and really wanted to respect the management team's opinion. and really wanted to respect the management team's opinion that what we've done in the past has not been successful with having one administrator over both, uh, adult and juvenile um, because of the turnover we've had. And so we'll try this out, see how it works and, um, hopefully it'll be successful.
And you'll have a lot of turnover on the board, actually, this.
We will, we will, so Bob Benton and myself, and I don't believe Sherry is running again for Gillum County. So that's three out of four.
Right.
Who's the fourth? Um, oh, Joe.
Joe.
Joe. I don't know when he's up, but. Joe will be standing alone, he'll be the most experienced board member.
And he just started.
I think he just started. Yeah.
He's the only one guaranteed to be here. Um, I was gonna say, are you done?
I just got all in pole, didn't I?
You just got turnover to the test.
Are you all done?
Yeah.
I just was gonna, thinking of something and there's these new terminologies that have been coming up, that new words or whatever. And one of them recently was the great resignation, right? Which is like very interesting, they, basically all these people have resigned recently because of COVID and everything, just like, what are these people doing, you know, but they're resigning, uh, some of them were going some places, some of them were not working, some of them retired. But I heard a new one the other day, and I don't know if you guys have heard it, but it was interesting to me and I think it's pertinent today. Um, it was defined as the COVID cliff. And what that is, is that, um, it was explained to me that there's been all these funds coming in, all this money coming out, and all these organizations have been building up, building up, you know, all this kind of stuff. And there's a concern that all of those funds that have been coming out, and we had some discussion with Congressman Bents as well, is that those funds cannot just continue to flow. And so the COVID cliff is, those funds are gonna be going away and there's a lot of organizations that are going to potentially be struggling to now get back into this mode of where we had more money than we could spend, more money than we could hire people with. And now we're getting into a situation where we have all these people and how are we gonna keep them on payroll and how are we gonna keep providing services? So it was an interesting term that I hadn't heard, the COVID cliff.
Cliff.
It, it's coming, is, is what I've heard from some people, particularly in the medical field.
Yeah, I'm concerned three to five years from now, what, what it's gonna look like.
Well, and even in public health, I mean, you know, public health got a lot of resources and a lot of, and they needed people to do all this work. But are they gonna be, is it sustainable?
No, absolutely not, in fact, a lot of those folks have left, so they were contract workers, they were contracted. And I think the majority of that COVID team has now been, they're gone.
Is that right?
We're getting back to the, um, core, yeah.
Anyway, new terminology, it was interesting to me, so I thought I'd share. That's all I had.
Okay, is that it? Well, then.